Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Santa Barbara Unified Board of Trustees Meeting this June 27, 2023. Do we have any public comments for closed session? If we do not, we adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Trustees Meeting for June 27, 2023. You see a little few changes up here. Dr. Maldonado and Ms. Simms-Moten are at a conference this evening. Mr. Vence, thank you for acting superintendent today, and I will be running the meeting. Welcome. And I believe you have a superintendent's report, but we will do the pledge first. Thank you.
Language access?
Language access, information about language access. Thank you.
Good evening. In order to provide language access, we have Spanish interpretation and ASL interpretation available via Zoom. Buenas noches. Tenemos interpretación al español disponible para esta reunión. Thank you. Gracias.
All right. Thank you. Everyone, please rise and let us do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The board met in closed session, and I will be reporting out the action taken in closed section, session, closed session. We reviewed several requests for transfers from other school districts to Santa Barbara Unified School District, and the board approved 20, 23, 24-T20, 4-0. The other transfers, T10, T11, T12, T13, T14, T17, T18, T19, T20, T21, 22, 23, 24, and 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36, were not approved in a vote 4-0. To repeat that, transfer number T20 was approved 4-0. The remaining requests were not approved. The motion to approve the stipulated agreement for expulsion on student discipline case number 2022-21 was made by Mr. Banning, second by Ms. Munoz, 4-0. Motion to approve the stipulated agreement for expulsion on student discipline case number 2022-23-24, motion made by Mr. Esquivel, second by Mr. Banning, and carried Student Board Member Report. Ms. Cavia.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good June. It's almost over, which is crazy. And I just have a few things today, not to really report out anything that I've been doing, but this is my last meeting and the last real event of my term as student board member. So I just wanted to share a little bit on the past, present, and future of my term. So reflecting on the year, we've done a lot, not just me, but my whole team. Team includes everyone as part of the district, all the students, all of the student representatives, Issa and Emily, who represented DPNSP, and our representatives from La Cuesta as well. We work together to make sure that we center inclusivity and equity at the focus of our work. And I also wanted to share a few lessons that I've learned throughout the work that I've done. Number one, just to be inquisitive and always ask questions, no matter how basic they may seem. And also to be innovative, think outside the box, because we're always just so used to coloring inside the lines. But I think sometimes the best progress has been made when we ask questions and try things that have never been done before. And also to stay progress oriented. A lot of times, it's easy for us to look at work that we're doing and say, wow, it's great. We did it. Check off the box. But it's important for us to know that there's always room for improvement. There's always ways that we can develop our work and strengthen our work. And so that's something that I really learned. And also to just stay present in each moment. This term has gone by so quickly, but I think, and I'm sure every board member can attest to this, it's truly an honor to be part of this board, to be part of this district in this capacity, to attend events and to recognize student achievement and to, you know, give speeches and to even share my comments at these meetings. Every bit of it feels like such a privilege. And I also want to express my gratitude for everyone here tonight and everyone that has supported me in this journey. Each one of you has been my teacher, and I've learned some invaluable lessons that I'll carry with me for my lifetime. And so much of my success is owed to your endless support, compassion, and commitment to making sure that my voice is centered, that my voice is amplified. And I know this is only the second year, actually, that this board has a student board member. And for this position to already be so successful and so, you know, essential to the board shows a lot about the commitment to the school district to center student voices. I know many boards, it takes them like 10, 15 years to get to this point. So this is huge. And I also just wanted to shout everyone out because I feel so blessed to have had such an amazing set of role models, so many incredible adults, so many incredible students that I have looked up to and that I've gained so much from. And I've had some of the most incredible conversations of my life in this position. And so I'm so grateful to everyone that's been part of this journey with me. And looking towards the future, I have a few questions that I want to pose towards the board and just towards our district as a whole. How can we continue uplifting student voices? My position covers a lot of it, but I am a student from San Marcos High School that represents about 2,000 of our 13,000 students. We have junior high students that represent a critical transitional period between elementary and high school. They can be really important for getting feedback between those two phases. You have elementary school where you're, you know, seven years in the same group of people. High school where it's super, super different. Junior high is this really essential transformative period, also developmentally. So how are we bringing them into the conversation, making sure, even though junior high is just two years, that they feel as of those two years are purposeful and intentional? And that's also a point where we tend to lose students between elementary school and high school in terms of engagement. Either students feel like they are called into school, or they tend to kind of feel excluded from their environment. The other thing is, how are we listening to our youngest students, our elementary students, our TK students, even pre-K students, who will be most impacted by the changing education system and by the changing climate that we're having? They're going to be having to solve many of the problems that unfortunately have been created by older generations. But how are we making sure they feel supported and equipped to continue with those changes and not feel as though things are being thrown at them and that they're having to adapt rapidly? And then how are we also supporting our younger educators to provide for our students in a way, in a 21st century standard? Also, how are we recognizing student achievement beyond athletic achievement, beyond academic achievement? How are we recognizing individual achievement each day? And how are we allowing students to feel as though what they've achieved is enough? How are we developing self-esteem? And how are we developing the importance of self-recognition in students who especially feel as though confidence and, you know, high self-esteem come difficult to them? And how will we care for students before they become a statistic? How will we make sure that mental health services, physical health services are provided to students before they have to be reported, before they have to be found? How will we make sure that students are cared for in a preventative measure rather than an intervention measure? And also, how will we ensure that each student can rely on at least one trusted adult on their campus? How will we make sure that it's not students' responsibility to go and find an adult they can rely on, but the adult's responsibility to make sure they establish trusting relationships with students and that each adult feels responsible for establishing those relationships with their students? And lastly, how we invest in a culturally responsive and inclusive educational system from elementary school and maybe even earlier to instill what I mentioned earlier about self-esteem, about sense of belonging, proper self-identity, how we instill those things in students from a young age and not leave it to the end of high school for them to figure those things out? And lastly, lastly, how we support students in whatever they decide to do after high school? The world is vast. The world is scary. And as I'm entering, you know, the college application season, I'm realizing that the world is pretty big. So there's a lot of options out there. And I feel like we often make the mistake of jumping to a conclusion of, you know, there's only one path to follow after high school. And if you aren't on that track, then you might as well give up and you're not going to be successful after high school. But how are we making sure that every student feels as though there's something that they are passionate about and they can continue that passion in a capacity that allows for them to contribute to society in the future, whether that be expanding our career pathways, introducing career pathways in middle school, in junior high, or, like I said, in elementary school, just equipping students to be 21st century learners and 21st century citizens? So those are just a few questions that I want to pose as I conclude my term. Again, I'm looking forward to still participating in my public comments, and I will still be here in the community advocating and serving in my role as ASB President at San Marcos High School. So thank you all so much for all the support, and that's all I have to share tonight.
Thank you, Cavia. It has been an honor to serve with you and learn from you. You are correct, the world is a big place, and I know that you're going to make it a better place. You already have. So thank you, and we look forward to your public comments and your input. Next, we go to Board Member Comments or Correspondence.
Do it.
Oh, excuse me, Steve. Please tell us.
Yes, I am not Superintendent Maldonado, as you can see. But I am honored to be presenting the superintendent's report on her behalf of Dr. Maldonado. There are four items that I just wanted to present on, and the first one is our avid, has to do with our avid students. We were showing a slide deck, not the one that you just saw, that those individuals were our heroes of the heart throughout the school district. But we were showing another slide deck that had the names of the students who just graduated from Santa Barbara High School, or not High School, actually, all three high schools, but, or four high schools, excuse me. They were also avid students, and they were heading on to college, which is exactly what we would want them to do and be successful. So we just want to say thank you to our graduates, and we are very proud of their accomplishments. So there's the first item. The second item is actually going to be about summer school. So this year, we have summer school in all three areas, meaning our elementary school, our junior high school, and our high school. This is the first time we've done this. Right now, we have our Summer of Learning. This is year three of that. And we're doing it specifically at three schools, which are McKinley, Franklin, as well as Monroe. And as our students are attending the school, they're receiving the extra support in mathematics and English Language Arts, and they're also diving into the STEAM labs. And in the afternoon, they're participating with field trips, going to like UCSB, they're going to the Moxy, they'll be headed to the Watershed, Santa Barbara Museum of Art, and various other field trips, and working with our partners with that. And that ends on July 14. So if you have time to stop by one of the three schools, please do so. You'll get to see them, see the kids and the staff in action. So at the same time, we have summer school at our high schools, and the students there, they have two sessions. Each of the high schools offer a morning session as well as an afternoon session, and it's designed for credit recovery, as well as helping students improve their grade in classes that are A through G, to bring those grades up. So that's occurring right now. And then the last part is, we're doing, for the first time, a summer school for select students who need extra support in mathematics. As we've been reviewing the data, we know that mathematic support is of need, and we were rethinking this process. So what we did was, we developed a hands-on approach. So it'll be project-based learning through STEAM at one specific, what we're doing is very similar to the high, excuse me, the elementary schools, where we have one school be the location, and then various students will go to that school. So that'll be occurring, I believe it's at the, it's actually August 17. So that starts then. And then last, I just have to say, Cavia, so I know that we did our official thank you at the last board meeting, but still, we have to say thank you at your last board meeting here today. And so I just have to say, I got to know you when we had, last year, we were doing the time, having the request for proposal, when we were trying to select which agency we would use to come in and do the anti-racism, anti-blackness work. And you were part of the selection committee. I got to know you through that. And that was, and from that point on, it's just been a true pleasure. There was a quote that I saw the other day, and I just really referred to you, and I just, it was from Jane Goodall, excuse me. You might have heard this before. It says, "You cannot get through a single day without having an impact on the world around you. What you do makes a difference, and you decide what kind of difference you want to make." And you have, and I see you continually making an amazing difference on all of us. So thank you so much. And with that being said, we also would like to take, we have a little something for you.
Another thing.
Another thing. So we'd like to take one more photo with all of us to say thank you for everything you've done. And that includes the cabinet, for those who are here. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vence. Now we move on to Board Comments or Correspondence. Any board member who wants to? Mr. Esquivel, please.
Thank you. It's been a quiet couple of weeks for me, but I attended the Juneteenth Celebration in the city of Santa Barbara and wanted to acknowledge Juneteenth Santa Barbara and all the wonderful folks and organizations that were there to create such a fun and joyous event. It was nice to share community with so many amazing Black folks in our community and wanted to give them a shout out. Additionally, the Housing Ad Hoc Committee met last week to do tours of Housing Authority projects, and we got to see the quality of design that they build, showing the beauty, excuse me, the beauty of their projects, and showing that affordable housing can look beautiful and very livable. And so excited to share some updates at the next hearing. That process is moving along. And then I don't really have any other reports, but I too wanted to say a little bit about Cavia. And I wrote a little something, so I'm going to read a little bit. But I wish, I wish I was artistic enough to write a poem. A good poem, then. This is your last meeting as a school board member, and I just wanted to say thank you for your presence, your leadership, your compassion, and your commitment to equity and inclusion. So many of our discussions have been elevated by your contributions and deepened by your effort to ensure that the student experience is centered in policy decisions. I can go a little off-script. I know that in a lot of these discussions, adults, if I can consider myself an adult, bring our experiences in school, and oftentimes, we center our experiences. And even today in your student report, you reminded us to center the student experience and to bring other voices into our conversations when we're talking about how we spend our money, which we're going to talk about today, when we talk about how to create safer schools and campuses for our students and our staff, that we're not just doing it up here from the dais or in our offices, that we're going out and we're talking to students, and we're bringing their valuable experience and opinions. And if you've shown nothing else, it's that they do matter, that they do make change, that oftentimes, there is so much that we're missing from the conversation if you hadn't been here. And you've set such a high standard for what a student board member can and should be. And I'm excited for Anastasia because I know she's going to have your full support, and she has a great example from the last two years. I wanted to say, I know that this isn't the last time that we're going to see you, and I hope it's not. But one of the, I wanted to thank you for welcoming me on the board. It was a very nervous day, my first day, and your warm welcome and excitement made it so much easier. And each time that I see you, I smile, I laugh, we joke. Your enthusiasm is so infectious. And so even on those days where I'm a little low-energy, it's so, so helpful. And I know that I am better off for crossing paths with you, and I hope that this is not the last time we get to share community. And I'm so excited to hear about all of the amazing things you're going to do next year as a senior, and then hear about your great successes beyond. And just wanted to say thank you so much.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm, it's going to be hard, the transition to not having you here. However, I know that we're going to have continued dialogue and conversations about where to go from here, exemplified by the comments that you made in terms of how we should be considering students of every age, because they are our future. And your perspective has been very enlightening, and I'm looking forward to more of that, in seeing how you do during your senior year and what wonderful things you accomplished, and then going forward also. Thank you so much, Cavia. At this time, I'm, in terms of board, you know, board, board member, I'm looking forward to doing, taking part in the summer school tours. And with your comments in mind, also just asking them about their experience, looking at going, you know, what are they thinking about the coming school year and their excitement with that, and the concerns that they have in terms of having a welcoming school environment, whether they are continuing at their same school or transitioning to another grade level, or junior high and high school and so forth. So that about concludes it for me. Thank you.
I'm going to ignore Cavia for just a minute, but you won't get away with nothing from me. I want to say that this is the first board meeting I've been to that has been without the superintendent, without the board president, and I want to say thank you. Thank you to Virginia for stepping up to that role. I appreciate it. It's important that we have that continuity. And you're a Vice President. Thank you for that. Steve, thank you for stepping into the superintendent's chair and keeping things running and organized there, and all the other leaders who work behind the scene all the time. I just can't tell you how important it is for me every time to express to the people that are watching outside the system what an incredibly complex job this is to run a district like this. And I'm thankful to be on a board of one that is run with such passion and keeping kids at the center of everything. Now, Cavia, you also gave me a warm welcome and a surprise. On the night that I was appointed by the board, you reminded me that you had been in sixth grade when I was the superintendent at Galita, and you remembered me, but I didn't remember you. I don't know how that, I must just not, where paths must not have crossed. You asked these questions of us, what, you asked questions of the board, and I'm going, ah, it's just, they're just rhetorical questions. But they're not. They're not. They're real. And I don't have any answers for them for you right now. But I'll take them to heart, and I'll hope that if you have specific ideas about how we should be answering those questions, you'll continue to share them with us. I know that Hilda, she's not here, but I know that she would say thank you again for being her teacher. She said that. And all the other board members, I think I would speak for them, is that you keep us on our best behavior. We don't want to look bad in front of Cavia. And, you know, I heard somebody say it's your last board meeting. No, I have an idea for you. I think that you should start FBMA, the Future Board Members of America, because you are remarkable at this board. And whatever district you may land in, whatever opportunity, or city council, or whatever, you've shown the capability to be a wise and productive member of this board. And I hope you get a chance to do it when your vote, you know, when your vote actually counts. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, board members. Just a couple of comments for me. I'll be visiting the summer school probably at the end of the following week. I'm looking forward to that. Every year, I'm there with the teachers and the students, and it just fills my heart. Cavia, please keep asking questions. Our job is to ask questions, not necessarily to have the answers, but please keep doing that. And thank you. Now we move to the consent agenda. Do we have any public, oh, before we move to the consent agenda, do we have any public comment for matters not on the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have two public commenters. We have one in person, and it is, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your last name, Nancy Birdelson, followed by an online public commenter, Carolina Bates. And you will have three, if Nancy Birdelson would like to come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes for your public comment, and I will politely give you a 30-second warning when you get there. And make sure it's on. There's a little button at the bottom.
Hello. My name is Nancy Birdelson. My husband and I have raised three children in Santa Barbara schools. We've always been grateful for our teachers and our school system. Our children were well-educated in academics, the arts, and sports without distractions. Three of our grandchildren attend Washington School. I'm impressed with their fine, caring, well, the schools.
One, one second. It seems like your mic may have turned off.
Okay. Their music concert May 22 was incredible. It was heartwarming to be welcomed by my three grandchildren and their friends. Grandparents matter. However, the school system has had a lot more to deal with since the pandemic and the advent of cell phones. There is a mental epidemic to our children caused by permissive, foolish parents who get their children's cell phones. I noticed a troubling look on my sixth-grade grandson's faces after their mother got them cell phones this year. They have access to any information worldwide, true or false. Tragically, they are believing conspiracy theories. It's interrupting, interfering with their ability to concentrate in school, to sleep, to get along with others, and with the non-consenting parent's custody time. I applaud the school having rules about cellphone use on campus, but it's still a rule that should not be necessary. And one of my grandsons has gotten in trouble for breaking it. He, instead of reporting an incident to a supervisor, he bullied another student. That's terrible. The mental and emotional abuse my grandsons are suffering from cellphone use to their developing brains is in their worst interest. It's in the best interest of the children. It's in the best interest of the children to grow up-
Thirty seconds.
-to grow up with caring teachers, to learn from and not be confused by outside conspiracy theories. We teach children that alcohol, cigarettes and drugs are bad for them and we have laws to protect them. How bad is the unhealthy use of cell phones to a children's brain, mental state and well-being? It's wrong for one parent to dictate that the children can have cell phones without permission from the other parent.
Thank you, Ms. Birdleson.
And because two foolish parents could allow their children to have cell phones, it's vital that our government-
Thank you, your time is up.
...state and federal pass laws to protect our children from having cell phones.
Thank you. Next, we have a virtual public commenter, Carolina Bates, followed by-
Thank you. Do something about it.
Thank you. We have Carolina Bates online and then we are following that with Moni DeWitt. And those are all the public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have Ms. Bates? Okay. Moni DeWitt? You'll have three minutes and I'll give you a gentle 30-second reminder. Welcome.
Sorry. First of all, Kavya, I do really want to appreciate you. I think that you have added an element that actually brings a lot of vitality to the board and also a different perspective because adults don't see things the same way as actually like you're our client on the receiving end of this process and you're also open to knowing other people's experiences in a more intimate way than anyone else on the board or even possibly the superintendent will have. So I want to let you know that even though you didn't have a voting power, I actually asked for a student board member many times when I was also ranting about literacy, but I am very pleased to see you here and I think you've had an amazing impact that will continue long after you're gone. And along with that, like your focus for things you say about self-esteem and people belonging, I think you've helped other board members be more expansive in who to value, what to value, what to look out for. And I have always felt here that we have devalued the students with learning differences and the students whose first language is not English. And we've also not held them to a high enough expectation. And because of these negative beliefs, we've never been as proactive as we could be and their outcomes have not been as good as they can be. And instead of us focusing on needs and solutions, we've allowed politics to cause division and have some people be harder to be heard than others. And so my only request for this board would be to take a good look at remediation because literacy shouldn't be politicized, but there are people, if you're not up to speed and your processing is different, you don't catch up without basically one-on-one help that is expensive, that so many of our students are in high poverty rate, actually quite high poverty rate, so high and their parents may not even be speaking English. So, and their viewpoint, their cultural responsiveness, they don't view authority as something they would challenge. Like, you know, I have no problem challenging authority if I feel I think I have a vision that aligns with human rights, which literacy is. So anyway, long story short, we need to take a look at remediation-
Thirty seconds.
-because these students need one-on-one help, that's what they'd be getting in private school. We have vulnerable students groups, EMLs and students with learning differences and I would like us to have a community discussion on remediation and our moral obligation to offer free and appropriate education. You look at college readiness and our literacy third grade, EMLs, students with learning differences, they're years behind their peers and we can't ignore it anymore with so much money and El Cap. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Ms. Bates online? Okay, that closes public comment for items that are not on today's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo. Now we move to consent agenda. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? I do have a question and one of the items on the consent agenda is 19, certificating classified salary schedules. Do this salary schedules, I guess it's two questions. Number one, have they been reviewed by our labor partners? And number two, do they reflect the 4% increase, the 2% and then the additional 2% that the board gave?
I'm going to ask Director Ann Peake to come up to provide the information, if she can.
So to answer your question, I'm not sure if the labor partners reviewed the salary schedules. I know a number of different people have reviewed them, but I can't answer specifically in regards to that. As for the percentage, yes, it's the original 2% plus the second 2%. So a total of 4% is reflected on all those salary schedules.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I move, so move.
A second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now we move to the report discussion agenda or actually, no, I made a mistake. We actually moved to my favorite part of the meeting tonight, Ms. Hernandez, adoption of the Santa Barbara Unified School District fiscal year budget.
I'm so glad it's someone's favorite part. Okay. Okay, good. So here we are again, we're looking at the 23, oh, that should say 23, 24, excuse me, adopted budget. And when I was here last time, I told you there's pretty much going to be three parts to reviewing this adopted budget. The first part we did last board meeting was to open up the hearing to allow the public to come take a look at it, to answer any questions of the board members and anyone else who had any questions. And then this, tonight, we're going to look at, we have produced this very large budget and you all have a copy of it. And then low and behold, today, we find out that there has been an agreement on the state budget. So I'm not going to say throw this out the window because it's still relevant, but that's the thing about budgets, right? They are a snapshot in time. We look at, at a moment in time, what the revenues and the expenditures are and what we expect to spend for the year. So this, tonight, for your job is to, to come to the same hopeful agreement that we have in that we have a positive certification on our budget, which means that we can pay our bills for the current year and the two subsequent years, knowing that I will be coming back again in 45 days to give you the same budget, but revised now with whatever is in the final budget. And we do know some of those things, so I'll talk about them tonight just because we do know that. Okay, so I have a clicker. Come with clicker. Okay, so what is the adopted budget? It is the most conservative report of the year. And I said there, as we wait for the finalized state budget, which we just heard happen today. So, and our budget is until we know what that final state budget is, it's based on the governor's budget. So we know that there are actually three budgets and at the end of the year, everybody negotiates and comes to a final, final budget. So when we're doing this, our instructions are to use the governor's may revise. Again, it's a snapshot in time and it reflects everything we know at that moment, right? So we have positions in our budget that sometimes won't get filled for the upcoming year. We may have vacancies, we just don't know those things at this point. We just, we go in assuming that everything is going to get filled. As we know, in the past COVID years, that didn't happen, but hopefully we are better off now. And it includes the estimated actuals for the current year. So we haven't closed this current year yet. We don't, we haven't come to the end of 22, 23, so we are even estimating that and we're estimating for next year. But your job tonight, as I have said, is that we need to have the budget certified before July 1st. And it just is saying whether or not the district will meet our obligatory financial requirements. And that is what is called a positive certification. So what is not included are any changes that will occur in the final state budget, which we just heard about today. And I'll tell you what some of those changes are as we go along. It doesn't include revenue that we don't know about yet and some of that revenue is our actual property taxes for the year end of 2022, 23, and we have to estimate for the next coming year. And as you know, we're community funded, so property taxes is a really big deal for us. And, you know, we just have to stay on top of that and in our estimates. And it also doesn't include grants that were submitted but have not yet been received. We do know of a few of them that we have, that are coming in, but we haven't included them because we haven't received them. It also doesn't include the 2% salary increase for 23, 24, even though we just said that our salary schedules that you, you know, have just approved do include that 4%. We haven't gotten that into the budget yet, but we will for the 45-day revision. Okay. Oh, I will let Lacy come up, but maybe before we do that, Lacy, I'm going to go back. I'm just going to tell you very quickly what we know that is coming, that we have heard about today. The Senate and the legislator and the governor all reached a deal on the final budget today. Some of the things that we know, the 8.22% salary COLA, the cost of living adjustment is that exactly, and that's what we do have in our budget. What we have put in our budget is a, the governor's reduction to the learning recovery grant was going to be a 30% reduction, a cut, but that cut is only going to be 20.2%. So we're going to have a little more money to work with. The really nice one is the arts, music, instruction grant that we had only received half of it and we were told we would not to expect the other half, but in fact, we are going to get most of that other half. The total reduction for the arts and music grant is only a 5.5% reduction, even though we were expecting a 50% reduction. So that's, that's really great, especially since we've been working on that plan. Okay, Lacy, come on up.
All right, this slide has our general fund unrestricted and restricted revenues. You can see the biggest portion there in blue is, majority of that is our property tax revenue that we receive. In 23, 24, we are projecting an increase in property tax revenue of 5 and 1/4%. And we got that information or that percent from the county tax assessor's office. You will also notice that both federal and state revenues are decreasing and federal revenue is decreasing because we are no longer receiving or receiving less one-time federal stimulus funding. And then state revenue is also decreasing because we aren't receiving as many, those one-time block grants. Additional information about the revenue can be found in the narrative starting on page five. We'll go to the next slide. Oh, I don't know how to use the clicker. The middle? There we go. That was my first time. So this slide has our general fund unrestricted and restricted expenditures. Again, the biggest portion in blue there is our salary and benefits. Salary and benefits make up over 80% of our total expenditures. Within those salary and benefits, we did include just the 2% salary increase. We also included increase in CALpers, the rate for CALpers. Our rate for workers' compensation also increased and we also are going to have increased costs around health insurance. All of those have been included. We did also include a decrease in the rate for state unemployment insurance. Also included in the salaries is the continuation of the class size reduction. And for books, supplies, services and other operating expenditures, those are decreasing as we are spending the one-time funds and as we are spending prior year carryovers. And again, additional information can be found in the narrative. This slide shows our estimate for cash flow for the 23, 24 school year. You'll notice that the pink line is our total receipt, so that's when we receive cash. We receive the majority of our cash in December and April and that's when people are making their property tax payments. The green line is our total disbursements. So those are our payments to employees and vendors for services, utilities, supplies. You can see that's more of a flat line, that's something that we do on a monthly basis. All of this leads to our cash balances. So you can see that in April, when we get our big chunk of money, that's kind of holding us over all the way through October. And by October, we've spent down all of that money. We are projecting to go negative in October, but we do have reserves in Fund 17 that will help cover any negatives if they do come to fruition. And additional, if you guys want to see the actual numbers for the cash flows, they are in the back of the narrative. Let me get the exact page if anyone is interested. It is 117. On the previous slide, I had mentioned reserves. This slide shows you that we have reserves in the special reserve Fund 17. We also have money set aside for, in restricted resources and we also have unrestricted reserves. So all of these will help in when our cash runs out. So just for example, in the special reserve, we have 17 point, no, I'm sorry, we have, in the special reserve, we have 14.1 million set aside. One month's worth of payroll is 17.1 million. So the reserve will help cover one month's payroll, but won't cover it completely, just to give you an idea of why we have those reserves. Um, I don't know if you're able to zoom in. This is our multi-year projection, again, for our general fund and it includes the unrestricted and restricted resources. The top part is our revenue and then it goes over our expenditures. And I was just talking about our reserve percentages. And the state requires that we have a 3% of reserve on unre, a 3% unrestricted reserve for unforeseen circumstances. And you can find that on line 21, we have a 6.58 reserve. We also, like I was talking about, we have the reserve in Fund 17. The present, percent for Fund 17 is 16.16. We also have board policy, 3100, that states that we should have actually a 10% unrestricted reserve. So if you add those two reserves together, we get to the 12.74 for 20, for the fiscal year 23, 24, so we are exceeding that 10% reserve that is stated in the board policy. Another item that the county and the state also looks at is if we're deficit spending or not. That can be found on line 13 and you can see that for 23, 24 and for 24, 25, we are deficit spending. It is common to see deficit spending on the restricted side of the budget, again, especially when we have one-time funds. The state will give us all the funds one year and then tell us we have five years to spend it. So we're going to show that we're deficit spending because the revenue was reported in a prior year, but the expenditures are being reported in a different year. So it is common to see that. I'm going to go to the next slide. So this is our, this is, it didn't go. So this is our, this is, oh, it didn't go. Okay. So this is our, just the unrestricted reserves. So on the previous slide, we were looking at them combined. Here, it's just unrestricted. And you can see for '23-24, we're only deficit, that's the only year we're deficit spending. But this does not include the additional 2% in salaries. So that deficit will most likely increase, and we could also then see a deficit in the outgoing years. Okay, now I'll turn it back over to Ms. Hernandez. Oh, I went too far, I think. Thank you. All right, there we go.
There we go. Can you zoom in just a tiny bit, maybe? Okay. And, thank you, that's great. So this is to kind of just show you where we are with our one-time ESER funds, GEAR funds, all the different funds that we received because of COVID. The two that I have down there in the bottom in yellow were, are the two grants that I was talking about earlier, about the arts and music and instructional grants. So we, when we built this budget, we said we would only receive the 3.8 million, but in, of the original 7 million. So now we will receive an additional, not quite 3.8 million, but just, you know, 95% of that. So, so that's not included here, but we will include that in the 45-day revision. And the learning recovery emergency block grant, that's the one that, the 10 million there is with the May revise, which had assumed a 30% cut. And so that cut now is only going to be 20%, so that will also go up too. So, but this is kind of just to show you that we are burning through the monies as we are supposed to. Many of these grants are, you can see the, the funds timeline there. So many of them are running out, and we're, we're using them and expanding them properly. So that's just, this is just kind of a summary. That's all we had on that. Okay, so now, we can say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you, Ms. Preston. It's so much work that goes into this, and I so appreciate your knowledge and your expertise and all the time that you put into this. I'm going to start with a few questions, and then I'll go down. No public comment. Thank you. Thank you very much. A couple of questions for you, more, more clarifications, I think, than questions. In reading your report here on, starting on page two, it talks about a summary, your highlights, the deficit of 4.5 million, and it doesn't include the 2%. So that deficit, it's going to grow once you include that 2%.
Correct.
Do you have any idea of how much more you're talking about, 4 million, 5 million?
I would have to check on that. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head what the, no, okay. We'll have to look that up.
That's fine, it's okay.
I'm hesitant to give you the wrong number.
No, it's okay. It's, it's not an audit, it's an estimate, so thank you. And I really appreciate the fact that you included the, the schools budgets, the site budgets, and the equity funding. Thank you, that's really, that's really important. I do have a question in regards to the equity budgeting. What systems are in place for any accountability? What's the return on our investment in regards to student outcomes because of this extra funding? What are the schools using this extra money for, would you know? And it's okay if you don't, it's fine.
Yeah, it's, it's extra funding for the school sites. Some of, you know, some of it will be in LCAP, some of it will be in Title I funds. It'll be, you know, in different funding sources. And then the school sites are able to, we educate them on what they can spend the money on, and then they, then they go do that.
I can add a little more to that because we, we reviewed with each principal their budget. And we know that they're spending their money on additional staffing. So we noticed that anything from, not a literacy coach, but are those who are doing the work in elementary schools with supporting ELA learning. So they're like a para, for example. We also know that they were incorporating some of that funds into programs, like at DP, they have their Innovate programs, they were funding some of that work as well. And then in addition, we saw them using the funds in terms of, for example, I remember seeing it with La Colina with their garden project and, and other items in terms of bringing in outside providers, like I know that Santa Barbara Junior High School was bringing in more support with social emotional learning. So they brought in different agencies to support them with that.
So it's been directly invested where it should be to students?
Right, and it's shifting from instead of central decisions being made, it's more local, you know, as they say, local control, right?
Thank you, thank you, that's, that's good to know. Then if you could please clarify this, the golden line for me is that our revenue increase is about 6.6 million on, on page, let's see, where did I see that? 6.6 million is our revenue increase? Oh, right here, page five, from prior year, 6.6. Do you see that?
Yes.
And then our expenditure on page six, it's a decrease of 5.1 from prior year. I mean, unrestricted.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
So it's, so if you're looking at expenditures from '22-23 to '23-24, it does show a decrease.
And our operating deficit is 4.5. So help me reconcile that. If we're getting increased revenue, decreased expenditures, and we have an operating deficit, it's because?
Here's the 4.5.
So, so on page seven, you'll, those are additional expenditures. So on the unrestricted side of the budget, one of our biggest expenditures is our contributions.
Okay.
In prior years, we had our restricted routine maintenance count was held on the unrestricted side of the budget. And we found out that we're one of the only school districts in the state that does that. So, and for the '23-24 school year, we moved all of those expenditures to the restricted side of the budget. So when you're looking at that, when you're looking at the unrestricted expenditures on page six, you're seeing all of those decreases because in the prior year, we had the restricted maintenance expenditures in there.
Got it.
So now all of that lives in the contributions. And so now we're contributing from the unrestricted side of the budget to the restricted side of the budget. And so that's why you see that jump in the contributions going from '22 to '33. We had an increase in special education contributions as well as, I think, like, I want to say, it was over 6 million in contributions to routine restricted maintenance.
Okay, thank you. And a little bit on the, on the reserves, it talks about that we have in your multi-year on page 14, for unrestricted NYPDs, '22-23, 33.6 million, '23-24, 29.2. And when you first look at that number, it looks like a lot. It says, wow, you're really sitting on all that money? And once you itemize that, it's really not a whole lot. I mean, this is giving us basically two months of payroll for a budget our size. This, and also looking at the cash flow, if we didn't have those reserves, we would have to be borrowing more frequently. I mean, we have been borrowed in this last couple of years, I believe.
That is correct.
Probably because of the one-time monies, maybe.
And the reserve.
And the reserve. So the, in the long run, that saves us money. And what you're saying here about Fund 13, and Fund 13 on page 59, it says that we will be spending more money than what's coming in, about 1.4 million. So our ending fund balance in Fund 13 might be 386. So are you projecting in out years that we might have to do a contribution from general fund to Fund 13?
Uh, we did not include that projection to the contribution. I think we'll wait till the reserves actually zero out, and then we'll start looking at that contribution. We'll look at it again at first interim to see where it stands. Obviously, with the additional 2%, that's going to be added to the salaries and then the increases in benefits. They may end up eating the rest of that reserve. And then if that's the case, then we'll add in that contribution.
Well, thank you. I keep, I appreciate that you're keeping an eye on that and keep us updated as we, I know this coming year is going to be a really big year, once again, as we go into labor negotiations. So it's be very, very, very important that we keep up to date on that. And one last question. The positions funded with ESER monies, are those reflected here? Have those been removed from the budget, or are those in LCAP now?
Some, some are in LCAP, some still live in, in one-time funds. And we're going to continue to review where it is best for positions to live going forward. If it makes more sense to have it in LCAP, then we would like to keep it in LCAP.
Great.
Well, thank you. I, again, I appreciate all your work, excellent work. Thank you. Board members, any more, any questions from any of you?
First off, thank you for the budget Q and A that Ms. Hernandez and Mr. Vence let me take an hour of their time to ask a bunch of questions. But I just wanted to clarify a couple of things from Vice President Alvarez's questions. So the contributions that you moved from the unrestricted side to the restricted side, does that mean that previously, when we had, were presenting our budget, it maybe looks like there was more funds in there that we could use for other things? And now it's going to be a more accurate depiction of our budget?
That is correct. So the, we are required to hold 3% of all of the unrestricted? Total, okay, 3% of the total expenditures for our R and M, and that's routine maintenance. And so when we had our, our budget study and we had experts look at our budget, they noticed that and said that really should be on the restricted side because it is a reserve. And it should be held as a reserve. And by being on the unrestricted side, it looks like we have more money to use than we actually do because it is a reserve, and it is restricted in that you can only use it for routine maintenance. We can't use it for anything else, like salaries or any other increases. So by doing that, I, I don't know why the practice was the way it was and has been for years, but we've corrected that now, and so now it is, it is more accurate as it is sitting on the restricted side because it is a restricted reserve.
Perfect, thank you for that. And then, did I understand this correctly as well? When you're looking at the deficit spending that we're doing, it's because of the one-time monies that we have? So it reflects the spending that we have to do, not necessarily that we're in a financial position where we are spending our reserves down to zero. It's that we have these one-time monies that we have a deadline to spend.
So when you have one-time monies and you're carrying them over from year after year, you're, like what Lacy said, the, the, the revenue is in one year, and you're just carrying over the expenditure. So it looks like you're spending more in the year than, than what you have received because it's being carried over.
I see, that's a really good description, thank you. And then, help me figure out, it's on page 12, and it's talking about the board policy 3100 and the maintaining a minimum reserve of 10% and how that relates to Fund 01. That's at the bottom of that page.
Okay. So the state requires us to have a 3% reserve, but the board some time ago, I don't know when, how long ago that was, determined that it, that we would need to hold a 10% reserve. For, the 3% is for economic uncertainty, things that, you know, happen that, that you're not prepared for. But our board has, has required us to hold 10%. So in actuality, though, we're holding more than that just because our reserves are 12, whatever it was, 12.74.
So then, I'm just trying to compare that to this bar graph and how to understand it best is?
So the reserves, the, the money that we have to have set aside, that can be in the special reserve Fund 17, or it can be in the unrestricted side of the, the unrestricted fund balance reserve. So when we're doing that calculation of the percentage, we completely ignore the restricted resources.
I see.
Because that money is restricted and has been set aside for specific purposes. So it can't be necessarily used for, you know, unforeseen events.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the last question I have is, you showed a image on one of your slides that was talking about cash flow. And so in October, it looks like, based on Ms. Alvarez's question, that we dip into reserves in order to pay our expenses. What if we didn't have those reserves? Or what if we had just whatever the minimum was? What does that mean for our options?
So in prior years, we took out what we call or refer to as a TRAN. It's a tax revenue anticipation note. So in prior years, when we did the cash flow projections and we saw that we were going to be negative, we have to go through this process to issue notes. They're actually sold on the public market. And that is our, one of the, the only ways that we can get additional cash flow. And so the notes are issued for a year, and we have to pay it all back in the same year. And then there's interest and fees that go along with that. So we're, we're saving money by having, being able to use the reserves. So the years when we had the TRAN, our reserve was like less than 10 million. So as we've grown that, then, and again, with the one-time funds, then we don't need to get the, the extra cash.
Perfect, thank you so much. That was very helpful. Those are all my questions.
Anyone else? No questions. Do I have a motion to approve the '23-24 budget as presented?
So moved.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I was informed by the compliance officer, Mr. Vence, that we need to take action in public for F1, which is the inter-district transfer appeals. So let's, what I'm going to do is I'm going to break it in two. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve 2023-24-20. And once we do that, then I'll ask a motion as a packet for the rest of the appeals.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes 4-2-0, 2023-T20 is approved. I will ask for a motion for the rest of the request to deny the rest of the transfer requests.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-2-0. Number two, Student Discipline Education Code 48918, case number 2022-23-21. May I have a motion for, for that to approve?
I move, I move we approve the stipulated agreement.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is Student Discipline Education Code 48918, case number 2022-23-24. May I have a motion for that?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-2-0, thank you. Now we go back to our regular agenda, which is indicators report, which is Report of Santa Barbara Unified School District, 2022 Results of Local Indicators. Mr. Vence? Mr. Vence?
And just to clarify, we're moving down to the report, item number one, to give the local indicators report before we go to the LCAP approval process, just to clarify. All right. Good evening. I am bringing to you tonight, uh, the report for local indicators. This is required by California Ed Code. We're required to do three specific items this evening. One, to approve our budget for next year. The second one is to provide a report on our measures that are taken here within Santa Barbara Unified. And these are measures that are done in all of our school districts, but they, um, it's different than, let's say, our CASP, our test scores, which is centralized through the California Department of Education. So with everything that we do, we tie it all to multi-tiered system of support. As you hear regularly from my colleague Kenya, it's all about MTSS and that's how we tie all of this together. As you know, this is also connected to our four LCAP goals, as you've reviewed several times. The first local indicator, specifically what, what happens is that we receive self-reflection tools from California Department of Education. And then we review the various priorities as, as I will go through tonight. And they're measured as they, as they describe as local indicators. So we will go through and review the, the areas and then determine whether, based upon the, based upon the self-reflection tool, if it's a standard met or not. So priority number one, and by the way, this is tied to the LCFF, um, the, as they describe them as the eight buckets of LCFF. And it's the eight priorities that we incorporate with our funding sources. So number one, as you see, our basic conditions in, of learning. So we hit three categories, teachers, instructional materials and facilities. Instructional materials in particular, we also report that, that's tied to Williams. Uh, when they come in and review our instructional materials in the school district, that would be the county office coming in to do that in the fall. As well as we, with facilities, we do an analysis of our facilities with the FIT, which is a tool that's used to check the, our facilities to see what we need to repair or what, it just goes from everything from an excellent condition down to extreme deficiencies. Um, and that's also reported in our SARC. So they're pretty much tied to everything that we do. Priority number two, these are, are we implementing the standards and regarding all of those categories, uh, if reviewing those categories, the standard is met with full implementation and sustainability. Priority number three, that's, as you could see, that's, how are we doing engaging and involving our parents? And, uh, all of these categories that's within the, the self-reflection tool, the all 12 categories, all are at full implementation, except for category number seven, which is full implementation and sustainability. We're being measured in terms of, if you read it closely, it's not describing in detail how we're doing it. Um, it's not describing how many, how many parents are we, we in contact. We also, we measure that as well through other indicators besides this. This is a specific indicator, making sure that we are applying our resources to engage parents and families and what structures that are in place. So, and we met the standard with that. Priority six, that's with our school climate. We use to measure school climate. We've been using for the past several years, the California Healthy Kids Survey. Um, that's distributed to not all the grades. It's specifically to, I believe it's fifth grade, seventh grade, uh, fifth grade, sixth, fifth grade or sixth grade, sorry, I should know this. But it's, it's graded, one grade in elementary school, one grade at, at junior high school and 11th grade or 11th grade at the high school. Specifically with this, it's asking if we are providing a survey to our, to our students. We also provide a survey to staff, as well as we provide a survey to families. It's the same company Westhead that does this. And this is a survey that's commonly used in California. One of the things that you're going to be hearing from Ms. Edison is that we're going to be shifting from using the CHICKS survey to actually using another survey platform that, um, that other school districts are using successfully. One of our concerns is that it's a dipstick with the CHICKS survey with specific grades and not with all grades. So we want to be able to do that with all of our students, number one. And number two, we're able to do it with this new survey tool, not just one time like the CHICKS survey, but to do it two times. So we could do it, uh, we're going to do with the other tool at the beginning of the year and then we'll do it near the, near the second or I would say the third quarter of the school year. So that will be the shift there. Priority number seven, that's making sure that we're offering, uh, multiple courses and a broad selection of courses to our students. So that includes everything from IBAP, Career Tech Ed. Everything is accessible to our students as well as making sure that we're locked into place with, um, again, our ELA and our mathematics and science and so on. So again, we met those standards. And with that, I open it up for public comment and questions.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Banning, please.
The addition of another alternative to the CHICKS survey, is that a replacement or an addition? Do we still have to continue to use the CHICKS on a two, every two-year period?
That's a great question. Um, and actually, the CHICKS survey we do every year and I incorporate that as one of the measures or one of the indicators in our LCAP. So you'll see it when you're reviewing the LCAP, you'll see some of the CHICKS indicators in Goal Two and Goal Three. We, uh, Kenya and I, really, we were discussing that and at first we were saying, let's do both surveys. But then upon analysis of the new tool, it's the same questions that have to do with connect, students feeling connected to the school or feeling safe. It's, so we're going to line the questions, uh, so that we're still going to include in the LCAP, the, the same concept that's being measured, if that makes that clear.
So there's no state requirement to use that specific instrument?
No, there's no state requirement. It's basically that indicator says you can use any survey tool.
I think that's a great plan. Thank you.
Any other questions? Kavya?
Um, I know that individual school sites sometimes collect data using their own surveys or using their own, like, focus groups or whatever. Um, so does that data only affect site decisions or is that also reported to the district and included in the LCAP?
It, it actually depends. Um, so some surveys will just be specific for that school site and it won't impact the district. I would say some of the, like, for example, this past year, we did surveys, um, as, as well as focus groups regarding the, measuring the anti-blacknessism racism. Um, and that specifically, even though it was at specific school sites, that was brought to, to tie into what's going on district-wide, so.
Mr. Vence, for the benefit of the public, would you please explain what the CHICKS survey is?
The California, California Healthy Kids Survey. So is that?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Nope. Uh, Mr. Vence, please remain there. We're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the LCAP. So please go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, I bring to you this evening, the, the final version of the LCAP. It's, uh, the packet that you saw in Board Docs is what will be delivered to the County Education Office upon approval tonight. And that includes, as you see this first page, which is the budget overview for parents. And then the next chunk is really the local control accountability plan for next school year. Then after that, we have the, the budget sheets that you'll see, which is, you know, the contributing, or it's actually the, yeah, it's all the contributing, uh, budget, uh, the actuals in terms of 2223. And then the budget that we've have for 2324 school year and the contributing funds or contributing actions with that. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention that can't be reiterated enough that I learned from, from board member, uh, Mr. Escobedo with their conversation was that clarifying, number one, the LCAP funds are not, they are not the school budget or the district budget. And it's easy to get confused with that. So there's specifically a portion of the budget designed to address a specific student population, what we, we technically call unduplicated students. But most importantly, there are the students who are impacted by various, um, various items, including it would be low socio-economic or low-income students, that would be one impact, um, students, emergent multiling, uh, sorry, emergent multilingual learners, right? Uh, we have students, uh, with various abilities or special education students or the, or the CD calls it students with disabilities. Um, but we want to be asset. We want, we want to focus on their assets. So we say various abilities or special education students. Others are homeless students as well as foster youth. So those are the five groups of students that this funding source is focusing on to make an impact so they are prepared for college and career. So I just wanted to reiterate that and, um, and thank everyone who's been involved with providing input and helping us as we developed this budget, including the, the county office, which reviewed it and gave some recommendations. And so we've folded that in and I present to you the LCAP.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one public commenter.
Thank you, Mr. Vence.
And it is Moni DeWitt. And like before, you have three minutes and then I'll give you a gentle 30-second reminder. Welcome.
Thank you. And, um, yeah, so I'm here tonight because this is a really important document and as the board, I guess, since we have a limited time, three things where I don't feel that we've not actually met the criteria, that's A, in transparency, B, in seeing if it's most effective, and third one is stakeholder engagement. And just briefly, probably the most important to me is the transparency and most effective because our budget has increased, we're up to $27 million. But this is, as Mr. Vence indicated, to the five most vulnerable groups. And those at the bottom of that totem pole are students with learning differences and next up are EMLs and then foster youth, socio-economics and homeless. And what all these groups have in common, and the NAACP and Ogden will support this as well as other groups, Eric Adams, mayor in New York, um, is that their, their lag in literacy has pulled them way down. There are other issues on top of that, but that's a fundamental. And though our district has implemented a better program, it's not going to impact people until about three years. So we right now, as uncomfortable as it may be, have thousands of students who need a remediation. And I think that money is here. I think it can come out of LCAP. I think we can have adult discussions about what is best, science-based, but we have need that we're kind of denying. And I'm here so that we don't deny it. And I'm also here so that we can see how this is transparent. I actually asked for a FOIA report. I was delayed by the district's attorneys. I'm sure this information you all have because this is real money and it's going to people and it went to people before. So I run a business and I have to write the payee, the amount and the description. That's all I'm asking for. It's the same as my Intuit program for software that a small business owner would have. So that's the transparency part. I don't think the district is meeting it. And other parents that I've spoken to behind the scenes all feel the same way. We feel like the goals are great and then there's these big wads of money going out, but nobody knows if it's effective or who it's going to. And so the community feels left out of the process. That brings me up to, and I know Mr. Vence has tried to adapt, as I told them, but stakeholder engagement wasn't really met. Facebook doesn't cut it. You got to do, you know, proactive, write an article in the Independent, tell the community you care. We have innovative, brilliant people who can help you, help the most vulnerable in the most effective way. But we're kind of working in silos and we are not being open, we're not being inviting and we're not being as transparent as we could be. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There are no other public commenters.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Mr. Vence. And thank you for clearly stating, uh, the idea that this is not the full budget. And then a question I have based on that is, these are not the only dollars that go to supporting these students, correct?
That's correct. Yes. So we, we've, um, been investing, as you heard, we have, uh, the one-time funds or the funds that we got from both federal and state government. And we've been investing that money towards supporting these specific students, particularly as we were coming out of COVID. And we're still using those funds to, to provide supports to those kids. Secondly, we get federal Title I and Title III funds and those funds have to be used specifically to support those students. You can't take it and use it for, um, other items that is, that aren't as restricted. It's specifically designed for the students that we're talking about. So those are just three examples and I could break them down even further, but you understand.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. And, uh, when we had met during the Q and A, I asked you a question and you gave me a very helpful response. I'm hoping that you'd be able to share it is, when we were talking about the metrics that we use to identify the successes and then the areas of opportunity for LCAP, and obviously it happens year to year and we change our goals and actions year to year. And then we also have the additional opportunity that next year, we're going to have an opportunity to do the next three years of LCAP. Can you talk about what sort of metrics you're using to identify strengths and weaknesses?
Right. I think that's a, that's a great question. So we use specifically, it's, it's actually in the LCAP in terms of what we're using to measure. That's, it's pretty transparent that way because we're using, um, as, it's sort of wonky because we were in COVID and so we were able, instead of using the California assessment, um, we ended up using, they said, well, use this, you can either use the California assessment, which is smarter balance, or you can use a local assessment the first year. So we decided to use the local assessment, which is STAR Renaissance. And we use that with the grades, third through sixth grade for elementary, seventh through eighth for junior high school and 11th grade for high school. And what we did was we did that assessment the first year of LCAP rolling out, the second year, which was last year, we used, we did that assessment and we also did smarter balance. So we did a double amount of assessment because we were shifting from using STAR to smarter balance. So we use smarter balance for ELA and mathematics. We're also looking at college career indicators. So that would include looking at how many students are graduating with A through G, fulfilling A through G requirements, right? Those specific items like that or looking at how many kids took AP. Those specific items like that, or looking at how many kids took AP classes and so on. One of the things, just to tie up this, I think that's crucial, is that the, the design of the LCAP is very similar to the design of federal Title I accountability structures. So meaning that you can say, in my plan this year, I am going to invest in, I'll just make, I'll just make up an example. I'm going to invest in tutoring for fourth grade, because that's where I'm seeing problems with mathematics. So I'm going to invest in that. And you spend the money doing that, and the following year, you look at the data, and there's been no movement with the students. The way it's designed is, it doesn't mean that you have to throw that out the window. It, it is stated specifically that you can continue to invest in this evidence-based strategy, based on research. You can continue to invest in this. If you don't see continued improvement, then it's time for the district, after a couple of years, is to make a determination whether this is truly working, number one. Number two, as you know, with any change or structure, it takes time. And Mr. DeWitt was actually talking about that, the three, the three years it takes to change, to see real change. So the LCAP is designed specifically for exactly that. And then, as we go into next year, we'll also be designing a new LCAP. So we're going to be asking those hard questions again, seeing what we're going to keep, what will we eliminate, and then what we'll add.
Thank you so much. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vence, for all your work. And thank you for explaining the metrics. As we can see, there's so much work for us to do. I mean, I look at this results, and it just breaks my heart to see, like, our EML students. I mean, we need that targeted intervention when zero, all high school 11th grade, EML, 0% at grade level. And that was, I believe, 21, 22. So I'm so looking forward to this year's results and see how we can, how it has changed, and how we can continue to do better. So I appreciate your bringing that forward, saying, yes, there's room for improvement. We're working on it, and this is how we're going to do that. Also, I believe there's still a misconception that we receive extra money for LCAP. Can you once again review where's the LCAP money come from?
I'm tempted to use the glass of water that.
It's a bucket.
Okay. So basically, because we're, we're a community-funded district, we receive all of our funds. For the most part, it's through property taxes. As we saw tonight, the majority is property taxes. What ends up happening is, I work, it's great, is I work with an amazing person here, Lacey Preston, who goes into California Department of Education. They have a calculator that, that she will go into and plug in all the data. And what will, what will be formulated will be specifically how much money of that whole pot or bucket that we have to set aside specifically for our unduplicated students. So it's the same chunk of money. It's just that we have to just make sure that this part of it is just going to be used for the students. So no matter what, it's unlike other school districts where they get their money, and they receive a chunk of money from the state, and then they receive additional money from the state for the, for their unduplicated students. So that's the difference between our district and other school districts.
Thank you. And even though we use the same language as other districts, and when we say LCFF, when we say LCAP, our LCAP monies, it really is our first thing we have to budget, which is our obligation to serve the students based on the calculator that you just mentioned, and to that increase that it comes from our property taxes. And also, for example, like this year, the COLA, the 8.22 that the state, state-funded districts are receiving, we are not.
Right.
However, in the future, that COLA may be less, and our property taxes may be a little more. So it goes both ways.
Right.
So thank you for your work in LCAP. And if there's no other further questions or comments, I ask for a motion, please.
I move to approve.
Second?
My second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is approval of Resolution 2022-23-41, the Education Protection Account. And I believe that's Ms. Preston. Thank you.
The Education Protection Account, which I will also refer to as EPA, was approved by the voters through Proposition 30, and then by Proposition 55. The account will now continue through December 2023. The proposition has the following provisions that we need to adhere to. There must be, a spending plan must be approved by the governing board during a public meeting. Funds cannot be used for any administrative costs. And each year, the local agency must publish on its website an accounting of how much money was received from the EPA and how the funds were expended. If we can pull up the web posting item. So the web posting item is what will actually be put on the website tomorrow morning. And that is going to meet the spending plan criteria, and then also how much money was received and how much money was spent. So here it is. The top portion are the, the first set of numbers there. So that's, that's our revenues. That's the money that we're receiving for the Education Protection Account. For 21, 22, that is the actual dollar amount we received. And then we are still estimating for 22, 23, and 23, 24. For expenditures, all of the money is spent on teacher salary and benefits. So none of it is going to administrative costs. So that meets all of our provisions that we have to meet. And I will now ask the board to proceed with adopting Resolution 22-23-41.
Any public comment?
No public comment for this item.
Any questions or comments from the board? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-23-41?
So moved.
My second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of adoption and purchase of Spanish and English language arts curricula for K through six dual-language immersion program, CKLA Caminos and CKLA Amplify. Mr. Vence?
We would like to invite Anna Pilhofer, who will be giving the, the report, or not report, but the, giving a report about the action item. Ms. Pilhofer?
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice President Alvarez, members of the board, Mr. Vence, parents and community. This agenda item before the board is for your consideration and approval of the adoption of two-language arts curricula and its associated fiscal commitment in service to our elementary dual-language immersion program. Next slide. Since 2021, our district has engaged in a meaningful, bilinguistic-focused curriculum adoption process for both Spanish language arts and English language arts intended to serve our students in grades K through six in our DLI program at McKinley Elementary School. This visual gives you a timeline of the process that our DLI committee went through to arrive to the recommendation being brought to the board today. And our DLI educators began piloting Benchmark Taller and Benchmark Adelante over the course of two school years. This is in alignment, in alignment with the district-wide ELA adoption process. We also included CKLA Caminos to our pilot for DLI this school year. After careful review and input from, from our adoption committee, we then came to the board on May 9th to open the 30-day window for public review of materials for both Benchmark and CKLA. Next slide. This list represents the DLI curriculum adoption team that was composed of 16 educators and administrators from the school site and, and district office, under the guidance of the California Association Bilingual Educator Consultant, Natalie de Longre. Next slide. Our adoption process over the course of three years has included bi-monthly meetings with our DLI team, publisher overview presentations and trainings. Our very own McKinley staff were participants on the district-wide ELA adoption committee, where CKLA was first field-tested and brought forward as an option for piloting. In addition, feedback and input meetings were conducted with all educators at McKinley School, and surveys with staff were conducted based on co-created criteria rubrics. Next slide. For all curricular materials reviewed, the committee focused on these listed focus areas and criteria, and they became non-negotiables for our, for our committee. And you can read through those on the slide. Next slide. Our review of curricular materials included the additional feedback that we received from the school board, that we offer multiple ways in which our caregivers and community could engage with the materials that this, this included a curriculum information evening for all McKinley parents. Materials were also made available online and in person at the district office, the McKinley Elementary Library, and materials could also be accessed via barcode on the district website. In addition, flyers posted onsite and distributed throughout Parents Square were inviting for parents to come engage with the materials. We also took advantage of displaying materials at the school site's Primavera Festival for family review on May 26. Next slide. In meeting our objectives for the adoption process, all McKinley educators were participants in assessing the piloting of both Benchmark and CKLA. This included the hosting of two additional overview and Q and A sessions with our publishers. Listening meetings were conducted to hear about celebrations and challenges with the curricula. And after careful review and consideration, our entire McKinley staff voted, and were in consensus in recommending CKLA Caminos and Amplify, which are being considered to the board this evening. Next slide. So with that, I'm bringing forward the committee's recommendation to both adopt and approve the purchase of CKLA Caminos Amplify, and the associated professional learning and support of its integration. At this time, I invite the board to ask any questions in regard to this item.
Thank you, Ms. Philhofer. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment for this item.
Any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Escobedo?
No questions. Thank you, Ms. Pilhofer. And I just want to say, I'm so excited for this new curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pilhofer, and everyone else who was involved in this process. And thank you for also integrating the board's request that it be more, more advertised, more inclusive. So thank you. And I'm sorry if you already covered this. I stepped out for a minute, and I might have missed it. How was the response to the outreach? Did we get many parents reviewing the material? Any feedback?
We received one formal response via the survey that was solicited and, you know, promoted throughout the different venues mentioned. We have a lot of positive feedback that we received in person at the Primavera Festival event. But again, just one formal response via, response via the survey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments or questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
Okay. So Mr. Escobedo, motion to approve purchase of Spanish and English language arts curricula for K to six dual-language immersion program, CKLA Caminos and CKL Amplify. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Okay. Well, the next item is also Ms. Philhofer, number eight, approval for the development and piloting of a designated English learner development ethnic studies curriculum in the 23, 24 school year at Galita Valley and La Colina Junior High Schools, facilitated by consultant Connie So. Please, Ms. Philhofer.
This action item before the board is to review and approve the development and piloting of a junior high designated ELD, or designated language development ethnic studies curriculum. This includes a professional contract by ELD and ethnic studies expert consultant, Connie So. Our goal with this pilot and supporting contract is to target the unique needs of our long-term emergent multilingual learners who have been in U.S. schools for six-plus years and have not yet reclassified. It should be noted that this curriculum is to be written by six teachers across all junior high schools and piloted first by Galita Valley and La Colina Junior High Schools. It should be noted as well that this will be the first ethnic studies to be, course to be introduced to the junior high space, with the future goal of offering designated ELD ethnic studies as a course offering across, across our secondary schools. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions from the board regarding this item.
Do we have any public comment?
No public comment for this.
Any questions or comments from the board? No comments from my colleagues. I want to thank you and anyone else who was involved in this. This is something that, as you know, it's been, I've been on this for a long, long time. And I'm so happy to see that this is taking place and that you're doing this, and that we have teachers writing this curriculum. So thank you. Really appreciate this, your efforts, and the team members that helped you with this as well. Is there a motion to approve, for approval for the development and piloting of a designated D ELD ethnic studies curriculum in the 23 school year at Galita Valley and La Colina Junior High?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. The next one is approval of ETS staffing reorganization and net data coordinator job description. Mr. Ramirez, please.
Good evening, board. Vice President Salvariz, members of the board, Mr. Vence. Tonight, we are asking for approval of the ETS staffing reorganization that I was able to report last meeting on June 13. In summary, we're looking to improve our structure to better support the needs of our students, our staff, and our district office functions. We will be adding five new positions and reducing one for a total of four new additional personnel. The five positions will be a data coordinator, network administrator, and three IT support specialist one positions, and we will reduce by one IT help desk technician. This, again, will pose no impact on the general fund, as we have found ongoing cost savings through our tech equity buyback program, our E-rate savings, and other software platform reductions. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. Otherwise, look for an approval.
Any public comment?
No public comment on this item.
Any questions or comments from the board? One comment for me, the same one I had last week. It says, we're using Esther money, which is one-time monies, to fund permanent positions. So remind me how we're going to cover that again, so it's not an impact to the general fund?
So we have, we continue to leverage additional cost savings, like I just mentioned, through the tech equity buyback program, through cost savings of that program, like warranty savings and less damages through some of the changes. Additionally, E-rate savings of $80,000 a year ongoing, as well as software platform reductions. We were able to find that difference in monies to, to manage that ongoing costs and those out years.
Thank you. And with the assumption that it's approved tonight, is this going to be a full recruitment process? Are these positions going to be advertised?
That is correct. Yes, they will be flown pending this approval.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? If not, may I have a motion to approve the ETS staffing reorganization and net data coordinator job description?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Okay. I believe you have the next one as well. Approval of Verkata Visitor Management Platform Pilot. Mr. Ramirez?
Thank you. I'm back already. So Educational Technology Services, ETS, is seeking the approval of this pilot project. We've partnered with Student and Family Services, with Business Services, Facilities, essentially all the departments, right, to propose a pilot aimed at enhancing our safety and security measures at specifically Santa Barbara Junior measures at specifically Santa Barbara Junior High and the district office as a pilot program. These specific locations were determined due to some external activity in the surrounding areas that have raised some safety concerns. So this pilot will add a technology system at the main point of entry at these locations. It will consist of security cameras, indoor and outdoor, visitor tracking system, panic buttons, as well as secure access, so we can electrify our doors and have an intercom system as well. The system will provide visibility for our staff to know who is on campus, as far as guests, visitors, contractors, consultants. And will also be another layer of deterrence for unwanted guests from the outside that may be a threat. This project also includes the replacement of the front door here at the district office. As many of you may know, it's safe to say that we've gotten our money's worth for the decades we've had it, and it needs to be replaced, not only to work with the new system, but to provide additional security for our staff. The long-term strategy here is to test this technology for this next school year so that we can have good data on whether it's working. And also, in conjunction with that, we are trying to secure grant funding through the COPSS Office, which is a division of the Department of Justice, to secure a grant to pay for this project to implement this system at all of our school sites going forward. And that's through the School Violence Protection Program. So this is just a pilot for this whole project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any public comment?
No public comment.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you. Thank you for your work in this. Of course, safety first. We appreciate it very much. If no other comments or questions, may I have a motion to approve of Veracata Visitor Management Platform Pilot?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed 4-2-0. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
The next item is approval of tentative agreements between Santa Barbara Unified School District and Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Ms. Peak?
Good evening, Board. Vice President Alvarez, members of Board of Education, and Mr. Venz. During the course of the 22-23 school year, the negotiating teams for the district and the teachers' union met on various issues. In front of you are the agreements that were met by mutual agreement between the two sides. We reached agreement on the following. Language, which addresses junior high and high school student schedules involving periods zero and seven. Elementary schools shall be allocated time sufficient to provide each TK through sixth grade teacher within a year's average, with the exception of the months of August, December, and June, because each of those are short months. 300 minutes per month of teacher-directed planning and prep time using the elementary prep PLC schedule. Elementary adjunct duties. Each teacher will be required to attend one back-to-school night in one open house. The principal and the teacher in charge will generate a site adjunct duties list made up of adjunct duty items, of which teachers will sign up for at least one site adjunct duty assignment, and that list will range between six to nine hours. Personal illness and injury leave. Upon exhaustion of sick leave, the certificated staff member will receive differential pay up to 100 days. The calculation of the differential pay will be the salary minus the cost of the substitute employee. It will not be less than 50% of the employee's salary. Personnel absence leave, otherwise known as PAL days. This language addresses the conditions under which the PAL day can occur, including notification to the site five days in advance of the request. The site notifying the employee within two workdays if it's approved. And that once a PAL day has been approved, it cannot be rescinded by administration. And last but not least, some special education caseload and compensation language. So I am happy to answer any questions about those. Should there be any questions?
Any public comment?
No public comment.
Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the tentative agreements between Santa Barbara Unified School District and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we move to the next one, number 12. Approval of salary schedule and work calendar change for elementary principals. Ms. Peak?
I'm just going to stand here for a while.
Please. Pull up a chair.
Exactly. So good evening again. The item you have in front of you is the approval of the elementary principal salary schedule and work calendar change. Elementary principals currently work a 220-day work calendar and are on the salary schedule at range 21E. This language proposes that elementary principals will be paid the same dollar amount at 215 contract days as they would at 220 contract days. So please let me know if there are questions I can answer.
Any questions or comments from the board? If not, may I have a motion to approve the change in workdays for elementary school principals? Reduction of five days from 220 to 215 days.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Peak, once again. Number 13, approval of human resources recommendation.
The third human resources item you have in front of you is our approval of human resources recommendations. This item documents the various personnel actions that occur with our employees. It includes appointments, leaves of absence, resignations, reassignments, and terminations. Some items that I would like to highlight, which are two very large highlights, are recent retirements. At Keely and Chilton, the library media specialist at Santa Barbara Junior High is retiring after 30 years. And Mario Gomez, who is our swimming pool operator, is retiring with over 23 years of service. With that, again, I am happy to answer any questions that there might be.
Any questions or comments from the board? A big congratulation to these two employees and a big thank you for their service. If no questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve the personnel action items?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moved 4-2-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peak. Mr. Venz, approval of Educational Services Department Reorganization.
Yes, thank you. With Dr. Monroe's resignation as superintendent of elementary education, we looked at the restructuring of Educational Services Department to, one, is to better understand the structure that was in place, which is basically an assistant superintendent of secondary and assistant superintendent of elementary. What we learned was that from 2011, when the district became unified, a unified meaning that it was an elementary district and then a secondary district. And once it was unified, they kept the same structure in place. And the reason we were looking at this and analyzing it is because it's caused, you know, it's caused challenges in terms of unifying the mission that we're trying to achieve as basically a TK-12 or basically pre-K-12 school district. So to eliminate some of the confusion and to streamline this, we're recommending that the board approve four specific items, and that would be, this is just one approval for these four items. A new job description for Executive Director of Elementary Education. A new job description for Executive Director of Secondary Education. Approval and amended contract for Dr. Sheffield. And of course, the job description, this new job description of Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, as well as approval on transfer, or yes, transfer of Ms. Alvarado from Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction to Executive Director of Elementary Education. And this comes with a cost savings of approximately $30,000.
Any public comment?
No public comment.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Banning, please.
I just want to say kudos. I think this is a really good idea structurally. Interesting to hear the background of why it's always been that way. We're a unified district. This puts unified leadership into educational services. Good job. I like it.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Munoz?
I appreciated the org chart so that we could see it clearly, you know, right in front of us. Thank you.
Mr. Scobeto? No, last chance. Thank you, Mr. Venz, and I did have a conversation with Dr. Maldonado last week, and maybe you were part of it too. I don't remember. It was a long time ago.
Yes.
I wanted to better understand this, and I think it's a great idea. And the fact that we're going to have a dedicated person for curriculum for elementary and one for secondary, I think that's excellent. So I appreciate that. And it looks like Ms. Alvarado will be moving to a different position. So will we be recruiting for the secondary?
Yes, as soon as the board approves, yes, we'll be advertising the position and then recruiting for that position.
Wonderful. So hopefully, we'll have this person on board hopefully by maybe August or sooner, maybe.
Yes, and that is the strategy.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your work and thank you for the report. May I have a motion? Or do you have a question?
Yes, I was also going to express my appreciation to Dr. Monroe for all that he has done for our district from the heart. Thank you so much and for attending so many school functions with us. Thank you. And with that, I move to approve, so move on this item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed 4-2-0.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one will be on, oh, let me see. Annual Citizen Bond Oversight Committee Report on Measure I and J.
Yes, that's it. In order to, since we have those two measures, Measure I and Measure J, they are the bonds that we're using for our facilities. In order to do that, we need to have a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee that reviews the projects, reviews the spending, make sure we're spending things correctly, and just kind of keeps up on what we're doing with the bonds. And tonight, I have the wonderful pleasure of introducing Mr. Frank Stevens to come up and give the annual report to you that is required every year from the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, for being here and for your time.
Well, thank you for your patience. It's been a long evening. At least for me, it's been a long evening. My report will not require any kind of approval, so don't worry about that. As Kim said, my name is Frank Stevens. I serve as Chair of the Independent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And that's for both the elementary and the secondary districts. The following annual report is my report and not prepared, as it has been in the past years, by the district staff. We are nearing the home stretch of completing most of the wishes of the taxpayers who voted to approve the bonds. The approval of the bonds allowed for numerous school site and district projects to upgrade or replace facilities in order to provide for improved student and staff safety, provide for healthier learning and working environments, and to enhance learning opportunities and achievements for our students. The facility projects are being completed or scheduled to be completed in the next couple of years. The goals to accomplish better safety, better environments, and the enhancement of learning opportunities and achievements will be addressed by the district personnel in future reports to the taxpayers, the general public, and you, the school board. Over the past six and a half years, our committee has faced many challenges due to the large turnover of district staff. The loss of institutional memory has been an issue as funded projects were being completed or planned for completion. The committee has continued to meet quarterly to review and question the progress and plans for the bond projects and expenditures. The stated goals of improved safety, healthy environments, and enhancing learning opportunities are not a charge nor a function of our committee. The better understanding of the projects and expenditures, the committee has taken the opportunity to visit several sites and see firsthand the results of taxpayer-approved bond dollars. These visits have been educational, often reassuring, and generally rewarding. We do plan for more visits in the future. Allow me to say, working with the newest, or should I say the latest, of the district staff, these members have provided a smooth transition. I thank the new district team for making this possible. In conclusion, I know it is unusual and perhaps risky to single out one project or one challenge or a single individual among all the projects, expenditures, and competent district staff. But I will do that this evening. What has been welcomed and appreciated by the committee is the offering of clear financial information. A financial expertise and understandable answers to questions asked by our committee members is indeed very valuable and much needed. I, as Chair, want to personally thank and on behalf of the committee, Kim Hernandez, for being that person. I know her work hasn't been easy, but Kim has, as an individual, has displayed a genuine interest and understanding of the complex financial issues. These come before our board meetings every time we meet. So again, on behalf of the board and myself, Kim, you have been much appreciated. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any public comment?
No public comment on this item.
Questions or comments from the board?
Well then, I thank you for your attention, for our old folks.
We have a few comments. Would you?
Okay, go right ahead.
Would you mind? Mr. Banning?
I just want to thank you for your patience to sit through the meeting and deliver that. And also, I appreciate hearing that what we just heard was your report and not a staff report. It makes that much more meaningful. And thank you for the positive remarks for our CFO. We know that. It's really nice to hear it from others as well. So thank you for your service to the district in this capacity. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. This has been a cup of tea for me because my 30 years in the school district, 20 of those involved with the teacher association, in charge of contracting, our contract negotiations, and a few other roles during those 30 years. I've sat in this boardroom continually, sometimes until midnight, with meetings, and I'm sure you're familiar with some of those. So again, I thank you for your patience. What you heard this evening is only the tip of the iceberg with what you will be faced over the next two or three years financially. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, and I still call you Mr. Stevens because I remember you as high school counselor. So thank you. Thank you for your service and talk about institutional knowledge and care. So we really appreciate your support. And we all agree about Ms. Hernandez. We're very fortunate to have you.
This is what I get to work with. Now, if I hurry home, I might catch the end of Otani's pitching tonight for the Angels.
There you go. We won't keep you anymore. Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you. And does the board want a five-minute break, or should we continue? I'm fine continuing. Okay. Well, let's continue with number three, Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group Recommendations to the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. Mr. Vence, please.
I actually would like to invite Ms. Pilhofer again to present this portion.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Vice President Alvarez, members of the board, Mr. Vence, parents and community. It is with gratitude and great privilege that I present to the board the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group Recommendations that are before you and included in greater detail as attachments in the board agenda item this evening. Next slide. I first want to begin with the lens from which we focus our work with and alongside our Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group. Our MTSS Theory of Change Centers are Black and African-American students within a fully integrated system of supports that links our district initiatives and its resources to ensure that our students receive the appropriate level of support when they need it and by whom they need it from. The Combating Anti-Blackness Working Group first identified three student-centered goals to focus their work, which includes more Black and African-American representation in staff, curricula, visuals, books in libraries, references used in class, et cetera, more student engagement opportunities, talking about race stories and experiences, and short-term immediate goals for safety that include clear communication on protocols for when racial incidences occur, that ensuring that the harmed are protected and provided services when needed, and the person doing the harm is addressed appropriately. Next slide. The timeline for our work group spanned across 14 meetings from March 2022 through June 2023. The conception of our working group was first proposed by our school board and superintendent, and the work leading up to recommendations brought forward to the board this evening involved extensive parent and community listening sessions and the formation of recommendations and suggested actions for implementation. In our March meeting, it was important to the working group that their recommendations have more reach to our Black and African-American families in the district. In April, a survey that contained the recommendations and suggested actions were sent out via Parent Square, asking for additional input. An invitation was also extended to our Black and African-American families to participate in an online and in-person community forum in May. This to offer space for additional feedback and offer time for airing parent concerns. Next slide. The short recommendations, numbers one through three here on this slide, are calling for the district to use restorative and trauma-informed practices with communities of care that focus on the harmed, hold restorative justice practices that shift the focus from punishment to facilitated education with communities of care, and to create ongoing affinity groups for TK-12 students as well as staff to have difficult conversations with each other and with a trained facilitator who looks like them and is culturally competent and trauma-informed. Please also note the pie graphs below each recommendation to see the survey results from our families, showing their level of support for each recommendation. Next slide. Short-term recommendation number four asks us to create and promote events and experiences that are culturally inclusive and that lift up the lived experiences of Black and African-Americans through multimedia work, visual arts, performance, and music. And recommendations four through five, being long-term, will take more time to evolve and actualize, but are asking our district to provide structured curriculum inclusive of guided conversations regarding race, specifically preventative measures regarding respectful language within all racial groups to include our Latinx community, draw upon a wide variety of pro-Black and African-American instructional resources aimed at creating standards for determining bias and racism in books and examining lesson plans for finding Black joy in learning with our students. Again, you'll notice the levels of support from our family surveys below each recommendation. Next slide. In response to our work group recommendations, we want to ensure that our commitments are intentional, intentional, actionable, and designed for long-term and ongoing impact. The formation of an oversight committee to oversee an action plan moving forward is in the works, which you'll hear more about with Mr. Vence in the next agenda item, which includes metrics for measuring the attainment of our goals that are aligned with the recommendations and that a timeline for reporting to our board and community is timely and is regular, all of which you will learn more about in the next presentation, as I mentioned. And with that, I will take any questions from the board that you may have at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Pilhofer, for all your work and very nicely organized and clear report. Mr. Scobero, do we have public comment?
We do. I'm going to start with the in-person public commentators, and then we'll move on to the virtual public commentators. Everyone will have three minutes, and then at the 30-second mark, I'll kindly remind you that we're at 30 seconds. So first, we have Teresa Martinez, followed by Cressida Silvers. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Teresa Martinez. I am a mother of a Black student who attends one of the schools in Santa Barbara Unified School District. I am also a member of the Combating Anti-Blackness Working Group. And first, I would like to thank the district and the board for putting resources to this working group. It has been 14 months of us getting together once a month. It's hard work. There are hard meetings to attend and hard experiences to have and to listen to. And so I thank the staff who attend. I'd like to thank the board also for providing resources to have the climate survey. It told us, I think, what we already knew, but was a good push for the district to do something. And I fully support the recommendations. I would also ask that the district create uniform protocols responding to anti-Black incidents that are used across all schools instead of leaving things up to individual principals to deal with matters. That these protocols are put into policy and are shared widely with administrators, with staff, with teachers, with parents, and with students, so that the expectations are very clear. That we provide comprehensive and continuous training to staff and teachers that are facilitated by those who have lived experiences with racism and anti-Blackness and are culturally competent. I would also ask that we create a timeline for responding to the suggested actions because I think that we all know if it's not on our calendar, then it's probably not going to get done. So that way, we can hold ourselves all accountable to make sure that this work doesn't fall to the side. And I would also recommend that we continue to have updates from the working group and from staff on the progress that is being made on this work. And that we set clear age-appropriate consequences for racist and anti-Black behavior that's, again, uniform across our elementary schools, our junior highs, and our high schools, respectively. And that we create a district-wide position as part of the family engagement staff to respond to the needs of Black students and families. And so with that, again, I just thank you again for providing a space for us to do this important work that is vital to the safety of our Black students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cressida Silvers. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you again for your focus on the generations-long damage of anti-Black racism in our schools. Thank you for supporting the Racial Climate Survey, which documents the current situation and provides recommendations for changing it and for working with the community members to turn those survey recommendations into specific actions. My hope now is that you will honor all of that work, paid and unpaid, that brought us to this point, and honor all of the families already hurt by unchecked racist language and behavior in our schools and implement these recommendations and actions as swiftly as possible and for the long term as an integral part of the ongoing culture of our schools. This is not a one-and-done. I want to especially urge the immediate implementation of suggested actions around staff response to racist incidents when they happen and providing support to the affected students and families. Get the policies and the protocols in place now, make them known to the community, and provide the information and training staff throughout the district need so every adult is equipped and has no excuse not to act, at the very least to interrupt it, to make clear that, nope, we don't do that here, just like any other unacceptable behavior they handle with our young ones. So I'm encouraged to see in the slides, in the next presentation, I think, that it appears that the policies and the trainings are, in fact, being put in place this summer so that our Black and African-American students won't have to wait yet another year for these basic supports. And I really hope that that's the case. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have virtual public commentators. And to start, we have Jane Ward, followed by Dr. Morgan Leaf, and followed by Connie Alexander. Do we have Jane Ward online? Perfect. Ms. Ward, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Thank you so much. I am an educator. I am the parent of a child at Santa Barbara Junior High, and I am the wife of a teacher at Santa Barbara High School. And I'm calling to ask that the school board take immediate and multi-pronged action to address the systemic racism and anti-Blackness in our school district, which was made evident in the Racial Climate Survey and ongoing incidents of anti-Black violence on our campuses. The Anti-Blackness Working Group gave you specific action items based on the report from insight. And I ask that that you build the community's confidence in your leadership by sharing how and when you will implement each action item. Implementation plans should be shared both in a written report and with a public update at every board meeting. It is also essential that the district has clear, thorough, and proactive protocols for responding to anti-Blackness and racial violence. Teachers, staff, and administrators must be given training and directions on how to handle racist incidents and make sure these are written into policy and shared with the public. Teachers and staff must receive training on these protocols. We request that you hold a summer institute on racism and anti-Blackness and pay teachers and staff to attend a learning intensive taught by people of color with lived experience as it relates to racism and anti-Blackness. The district must also set clear consequences and options for restorative practices for racist behavior and incidents, hold meetings at each school to present the protocols and consequences to staff and parents. This must be written into policy and shared widely. And lastly, the community asks that the district create a district-wide staff position to be included on the family engagement team that can respond to the needs of Black students and families. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Morgan Leaf, followed by Connie Alexander. Is Dr. Leaf online? Dr. Leaf, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, I'm Dr. Morgan Leaf, and I'm a local pediatrician. First of all, I want to thank school board officials for allocating the funding and resources for the Racial Climate Survey. Thank you also to the families, teachers, and staff that participated in the survey. I recognize this may not have been easy for some of you, and I applaud you for the steps you took to lay the groundwork for change. I wanted to speak today about the urgent need to take action and implement policy changes based on the recommendations of the working group. The results of the Racial Climate Survey provided objective evidence of the anti-Black racism experienced by Black students, teachers, and staff in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, which is a critical threat to their well-being. I would be remiss as a pediatrician if I did not address the effects of such experiences and the effects such experiences of racism have on the health of those affected. In fact, these health impacts on children are so substantial that the American Academy of Pediatrics created a policy statement in 2019 entitled "The Impact of Racism on Child and Adolescent Health." In it, they name racism as a core social determinant of health that is a driver of health inequities. Racism and its effects lead to chronic stress for children, which results in hormonal changes that lead to chronic inflammation, a setup for a host of later medical problems. Importantly, this is why the medical field is working to dispel the notion that being a member of a particular racial group is a risk factor for disease. Indeed, it is the racism one experiences and not the race itself that is a risk factor for multiple diseases. To combat this epidemic, the AAP, American Academy of Pediatrics, suggests, quote, "Universal interventions to eliminate racism experienced as a victim or bystander from the lives of children. An active societal anti-racism bystander behavioral intervention may optimize well-being for all children and the adults who care for them." To do this, we must implement the actions recommended by the working group and local community leaders to enact protocols for responding to anti-Blackness racial incidents, train teachers and staff on these protocols, set clear consequences and options for restorative practices for racist behavior and incidents, and create a district-wide position as part of the family engagement staff to respond to the needs of Black students and families. I implore you to share with us your timeline for implementation of these measures in a written report and update the community at each board meeting on progress towards these goals. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Connie Alexander, followed by Elizabeth Hannigew, followed by Barbara Parmet. Is Ms. Alexander online? Ms. Alexander, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Connie Alexander, president of the Santa Barbara NAACP, the nation's oldest civil rights organization. This has been a difficult 14 months to get to this report, but an even more painful 70 years of not being acknowledged, of seeing our students struggle across generations. The NAACP put forth recommendations, and I'm not going to read them again. They were published in the Independent, and I think you all have heard those. The African-American community is not a monolith, and as a board, you need to build relationships. Knowing one or two people is not a relationship with an entire community. As board members, you need to reach out to our community and not expect us to always come to you. During the last 14 months, I actually have only heard from one of you. And voting for these recommendations this evening does not distance you as board members to be actively engaged in creating this to be actively engaged in creating this change. The language in these recommendations lends itself to sometimes found vague. And that gray area works when you are worried about being in the middle and not offending anyone. But what is vague will not champion change. This process has been exhausting for our community, and it feels like it's almost coming forth with a whimper. The black, many black community members start participating in this process due to frustration and utter exhaustion. They didn't even want to come this evening. And finally, please do not forget that this all started because of the violent and hateful acts towards one black student. And he is still waiting for justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Hannigny, followed by Barbara Parment. Is Elizabeth online? Elizabeth, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Um, I, I would like to, um, just repeat everything everyone has said. I have agreed with all the comments so far. I am the parent of two black children in the school district. And the last few years have been difficult for us. Um, I am blessed with resilient children. But that doesn't take away the fact that they have struggled each and every day. This working group was painful and very frustrating. And what you've heard tonight, um, is very sterile. So I do appreciate the other people who have come forward and shared how painful this has been for those of us in the community and how this is not a sterile situation for us. It's ongoing. There are deep wounds going back generations in this community, and the situation hasn't been resolved. And one of the best ways to affect change in our community is through our schools. So we are really looking forward to what the school district will do with the working group's efforts and the racial climate assessment. And we are really depending on you to bring about real change, and we're going to hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Barbara Parment, followed by Sarah Bazan. And our last public commenter will be, forgive me if my mispronunciation is wrong, Lauren Quandet. Is Barbara Parment online? Barbara, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
It's a little muffled.
Hmm, let's see.
It sounds a little bit better. We can hear you. If you want to give it a shot.
I'll try to speak loud. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, board. After spending many hours with the district's recommendations, action plans and timelines, I appreciate the complexity of all the long and short-term goals in fighting anti-blackness in our schools. And I totally support restorative practices for racist behavior. However, what I have noticed about the restorative practices is that there have not, has not been much emphasis placed on the youth and their families who are harmed in these anti-black incidents. Your timeline shows scheduled trainings over the next academic year. And the staff implementation dated for 2324 shows that only a quarter of the staff will be ready to respond to incidents of hate during that timeframe. And that the district seems to be understaffed in committing to emotional and mental wellness. So my question is, will harmed students and their families receive mental health and academic support beginning in September 2023? Or will those students suffering from anxiety and depression after these anti-black incidents have to wait for years until the district has done adequate training? Again, I know it will take time to change the culture of anti-blackness into one of a more compassionate and loving community. In the meantime, it is absolutely essential that the district hire enough culturally proficient mental health providers if the district does not want to be held complicit in destroying the lives of our young black students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Bazan. Is Sarah online? Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. So courage and commitment. That's what it's going to take to make progress towards racial justice in our country and in our community. I commend the school district for making the first steps to address systemic racism, which has been substantiated by the racial climate survey, which shows clear evidence of the detrimental effects of racism on our African-American youth and families. My name is Sarah Bazan, and as a psychotherapist who has worked in the Children's System of Care in Santa Barbara for both the nonprofit sector and for the county, I know the trauma that our racist system inflicts on children of color and their families. Unfortunately, the economic challenges of living in Santa Barbara makes it hard to get good and experienced therapists to work for the low pay of nonprofits. I commend the school district for making efforts at expanding the mental health services available and encourage cultural and racial sensitivity training for therapists, as well as making hiring therapists of color a priority, like right now, like we need them right away. As the school district, you have the power to change the culture of this community to one of respect and kindness. And I urge you to be brave and face the injustices and the forces in this town that want to pretend that there is liberty and justice for all and who ignore the systemic racism that is a result of our racist history. We can create a different type of experience for the African-American youth of Santa Barbara, one of love and respect, and it will ripple out into the future. So please play, make this a priority now. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have our final public commenter for this item, Lauren Quandet. Lauren, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, and please correct me if I mispronunciated your name.
Oh yeah, my name is Lauren Quanday. Um, it's a French name. And I'm speaking tonight to both thank you, the members of the board, for allocating funds and time to complete the racial climate survey. And to urge you to continue to push for the prompt implementation of the Combating Anti-Blackness Working Group's suggested actions. Please ensure that clear and consistent protocols on how to deal with anti-blackness racial incidents are written into policy. And that teachers and staff are trained in these protocols by people of color with lived experience. Please ensure that clear consequences and options are set for restorative practices for racist behaviors and incidents. And these are known by the entire SBUSD community. Please create a district wide position to respond to the needs of black students and families. Please treat these actions as you would any other urgent and life-altering safety issue affecting our students and make sure that we keep all our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Scobed?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, first off, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to Ms. Pilhofer for your presentation. Thank you to the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group and everyone who participated. I know, uh, over the last 14 months, it has not been easy. It, uh, can be triggering, going, having these conversations, um, time and time again. And, um, as I've been saying, now is the time for us to start moving into the implementation phase, and I'm excited for the next item. So I'm not going to speak too much on, on this, other than to say that one thing that I appreciated from the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group is how, one, these are actionable items. Uh, and they are concrete items that I think we can fold into our implementation and, uh, and I believe that that's the plan. Uh, one that I did want to call out, and it was called out in, in public comment, um, is recommendation five and talking about a structured curriculum. Um, and I believe it's one of the more long-term recommendations, um, regarding race specifically for preventative measures regarding respectful language within all racial groups to include our Latinx community. I'm hoping that there's also some short-term actionable items in that recommendation five that we can add in. I know it takes time for it to, uh, build a foundation and long-term change, but I want to start having these conversations about respectful language and, um, providing more opportunities to share community too, I think is really important. I think it plays into this conversation. I'm hoping that, uh, as adults, as models for our kids, whether it's teachers, whether it's principals, whether it's district staff, whether it's us board members, that we really are intentionable, intentional about sharing space with black folks. And, um, I'll have some more comments to say about that later, but I just wanted to express appreciation in this particular item about how actionable these items are. And, um, I really think that these are items that we can fold into our implementation process. And from everything that I've heard, I think that's the intention as well. I just wanted to share gratitude, and I'll have more comments in the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Scobed, and, uh, thank you to the Anti-Blackness Work Group, 14 meetings. That is commitment. That is a lot. And thank you for having this courageous conversations. When everybody agrees, everybody's happy, those are easy. These are difficult, but it's conversations that need to be had. Thank you for your time and thank you for your commitment. Uh, Ms. Munoz, did you have any comments when I asked for board comments or questions? You weren't here. You don't have to. It's an opportunity. Okay, Kavi?
Um, I have a few other things that I'll share for the next item, but again, like, well, I just wanted to express my gratitude, um, for the Combating Anti-Blackness Working Group, for all the parents, community members, um, family members, district cabinet, for everyone that's been a part of this. Um, whether you've had to relive your racial trauma or listen to someone else's overall the experience can be incredibly difficult and incredibly isolating at times, um, to feel like I'm sharing and I'm not seeing any action being taken immediately. But I just want folks to know that we will hold ourselves accountable. Um, and I can speak on behalf of the students. We will hold y'all accountable for making sure that our schools and our climates are the way that we want them to be, that respect our identity and specifically speaking to this, um, to these recommendations, I can tell that they were thoughtful, intentional, and that there was a lot of discussion and deliberation that went behind them. And I just wanted to express my gratitude, my appreciation, um, and just overall, thank you to those of you who contributed to the discussion because I know it is so, so difficult to relive racial trauma. But, um, we want to ensure that the compensation we provided in action that the district will take. So thank you.
Thank you, and we move to the next item on number four, plan update addressing anti-blackness and racism in Santa Barbara Unified School District. Mr. Vence.
All right, thank you. First off, I want to say thank you to the, the members of the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group for their their thoughtful work around this. And, uh, yes, we are incorporating, uh, their feedback as well as the NAACP's feedback regarding the work that we're, um, planning on moving ahead. So, um, just again, a reminder of this is a multi-tiered system of supports that we're focusing on in terms of incorporating into all of our work, data driving our actions around this. And here's the, here's where we are in terms of moving forward from mapping out the work that we have ahead of ourselves to actually doing the work and engaging those around of us, or excuse me, around us. So we have three chunks broken out here. Uh, one of the things that we are working on right now is specifically the, the planning process around this. Incorporating the insight report and recommendations, incorporating what came from the NAACP, incorporating the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group. And you'll see commonalities in terms of the work that we're going to be, um, diving into. One of the things that we realized that was clear was that our teachers, our staff, our administrators are needing clear steps on what to do in order to address what is happening in our schools. So that again means really specifying with our protocols and our procedures. What does it mean for a third grade teacher witnessing a racist incident at a school? And what is the response to that? If it's, and it varies at levels in terms of if it's just, if it's the re, if it's, um, an action towards another child, one child by themselves saying the N-word. All of these things have to be addressed, and how do we address them specifically? From whether it's a third grade teacher, a para-professional, principals and so on. So really designing policies and procedures in place. So the other part is we are living in a community and also in our schools, we have realized that our teachers, they have to, as well as our staff, be able to recognize racism. What happens is we tend to become, um, desensitized by what we see around us. And we can no longer do that. So that has to be reset. So we are looking at this in terms of professional learning with our staff, recognizing, responding and reporting. These three Rs are going to be crucial. This, the other part is that what are we doing in terms of measuring our impact? So we have implementation, meaning how we roll out our plan. Are we actually doing what we need to do with the implementation? Those are metrics to make sure that we're getting that done. But most importantly, the impact on our students. So making sure that's in place. And then the last part is again, reminding why we're doing this work. I'm just going to remind you that within the insight report, we heard from our staff saying, I, I don't know what to do when I see something like this, right? So these are the things that we have to continue to go back to is why are we doing the things we're actually doing? This is because we have this report that actually is uncovered all of this to make it clear of why. The other part is making sure that we heard from our students as well as families of why we are doing this as well. That that's the bottom line. Why are we doing this? To make sure our kids are safe and feeling included in our schools. The last part is to, again, circling back and reinforcing these strategies in terms of reinforcing the, like I said, the three Rs. We're doing this process twofold. We're going at it from a responsive reaction to the work. And we're going at this in terms of a proactive effort. This proactive effort is about educating our kids, empowering our kids. If we just do this without this, we're going to be swimming upstream. We're not going to the source. So we have to do both at the same time. So you'll see within the second column, things that we'll be doing in terms of that, um, what we would like to do. I'm actually going to start from the bottom up. Because I think it's crucial to know that that part of the education and empowering of our students will have to start right when we start the first day of school. We have to set the ground with our, with our students, with our staff, making it clear that this is the new change. This is what we are saying that is no longer tolerated. And these are the things we are doing in order to address this. And then providing various And then providing various, whether with our students' modules of instruction, whether we bring in outside partners, and all of these, we have various resources available to help support with this effort. The next part, going back up, the staff professional learning, we have targeted four modules. One in particular, we have these deadlines, which I've heard from Teresa and others about specific deadlines. You know, it's not about just saying, we'll do it sort of around this time, but actually having those hard dates. September 30th, the goal is to making sure that all of our staff have received professional learning and continuing on as we hit these other following dates. Again, going back up, launching this oversight committee. That means including the formal turn that we've, we've shifted from stakeholders to educational partners, which means bottom line, our parents, our students, our staff, our administrators, our community members, shifting from the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group to an oversight work group, or oversight committee in particular. Oversight committee will do several things. One in particular, we have about four to five objectives that we're looking at. One is to get their, get their feedback on reviewing the policies and procedures. Have them review it, poke holes in it. What are we missing? What, what do you see? How can we strengthen it? That's one. Number two, getting their feedback regarding on what's happening in schools. What is occurring within the district? What do they see? Again, three, going to them about our professional learning modules, talking to them about the work that we're doing with that and getting their feedback around that, getting the recommendations. Fourth, again, going back to the educating and empowering students, getting their feedback. And fifth, if probably, one of the most important part of this is actually just keeping us We've talked about that the concern is that we lose, we've seen other school districts lose steam month after month and it fades away. The oversight committee will be responsible and along be partners with us. We ultimately are responsible, the district leadership and the district staff to do this and tied arm in arm with the, the committee to just make sure that we're on track to do this. The last part I would say is the progress monitoring. So as you see, we, we will be providing board reports on those specific, or during those months. So we're doing it once a month, leading into 2024. And then once we get to 2024, we'll do it every other month. Again, we go back to the oversight committee saying, is this going to work? Do you feel like we should be weaning back the process to every other month or every month? So these are, these are the things that we'll be checking and making sure we're on the right track. As you see, the, the times we'll be meeting with the oversight committee, again, July, September, November, and then January, March, and May. If we need to meet at more times, then we will schedule that. But that's what we're looking at with that group and then ultimately reporting out the metrics. The last few slides, what I would like to do with assistance from Ms. Edison, that this is just an example of what we would be reporting out. This is not actual data because we're not in 23, 24 school year. But this is a way to report out quantitative data of how many staff have participated in various professional learning modules. So we can show you the implementation data of like, this is what we're doing with our roadmap. The second one is student outcome data, again, quantitative data. I had mentioned before, we're talking about recognizing, responding, and reporting. The reporting structure, the more we make it clear about the, that reporting structure and how we're going to tighten that reporting structure will change the data that we'll be getting. Because once you start recognizing racism and anti-blackness, then you could start doing something about it and also making it clear on how to report. So those again, are policies that'll be tightened up as we're in this phase this summer regarding The last one is, is actually qualitative data. That has to do with what are students learning? Which modules have they taken? So this is just an example of doing online modules. I just also want to make it clear, like, we're not talking about students just doing online, online modules and saying, okay, this work is done. We've, we've solved this. It's, it's far from that. These are springboards in order to start the conversation, to start the dialogue within the classrooms and the professional learning of our teachers and their kids, our kids, and our administrators to start looking and using various structures within our schools. So having a look and seeing and engaging students at the elementary school, junior high school, and high school, that's what we mean by empowering the students so that they are part of the solution. So these are the things that we're looking at in terms of moving forward with this work. And with that, I open it up for public comment and then questions.
Do we have public comment?
Yes, we have two public commenters, both virtual. The first is Kat Ross, followed by Connie Alexander. Do we have Kat Ross online? Kat Ross, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, I am a teacher in the district. I'm so happy to be here to talk to you about this. I was really hoping that this presentation that we just witnessed was going to have more substantive meat on it. We have one month basically until the teachers will come back and learn about all of the great protocols that we will be following. I'm so concerned that we do not have written protocols from the district office given to our admin because it seems like, and I could be wrong, but it seems like what's happening is the district is asking our administrators to develop the protocols for each site without providing our administration any specific useful professional development for them, right? So we're not asking the most qualified experts in the field, what is the most useful way to reduce racist incidents in schools and developing a policy from that? We're asking our administrators, who are lovely and we love them all, we love all of our principals, we love all of our vice principals, they're great. And yet I am concerned that we're not going to be creating consistency across the district and that teachers are going to be reporting these incidents to our administration and we're not going to be seeing change. And we do want to see that change as educators, we want all of our students to feel safe. So meaningful training for admin by people of color with lived experience is necessary for this whole project to go forward in a meaningful way. I am concerned that the modules are literally online modules that teachers will be doing, much like the ones that we did at the end of this school year. So like a 30-minute online module, I can tell you, did not make me trained, what I would call trained. And I'm worried that the metric that we just saw will be used later after I've taken my online module and that will say, I am now a person who has been trained. And I think our community needs more, we need more transparency and we need meaningful training and written protocols. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And next we have Connie Alexander. Ms. Alexander, are you, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
All right. As the evening comes to the close, I'll be brief. First, I really want to thank Anna Philhofer for her incredible patience throughout this experience and her amazing tone and always just being inviting because it takes a lot if you're helping with meetings and facilitating in that way. So thank you, Anna. There is a great deal in these recommendations, especially now that here we are with implementation. I see a lot here about the use of outside organizations and companies and I hope that there will be RFPs forthcoming when suited to have that. Finding quality culturally capable people is going to require organizations outside of Santa Barbara. And I would ask that you be transparent in this process. We need to know who's doing the work. Also, reading these recommendations, it feels almost like some have already been chosen. If that's the case, we need to know who they are and where and how you spend dollars on implementing changes should be at the forefront of this plan so we can see that part of it. The oversight is specific to the needs of black students and we want that to stay in this lane and not get watered down. Oversight specific to the needs of black students, let's stay in that lane. We also need experts to develop these protocols, people who have done this work. Teachers need to be in interactive training sessions, not just online, but they have to be in, in interactive situations to help them work through it. We all learn that way, we're all different learners. So let's give people that opportunity to role play, give people opportunities for those other things. Teachers and parents are essential to making these changes and it's going to be deep work to get both these groups on board. I am concerned with some of the language in this report, that it might not be parent-accessible. Terms like restorative justice and trauma-informed need to be defined in very practical and accessible ways. Our black students deserve to thrive and they are not. Celebrate with our community that proudly exists. We don't need you to create black community in the schools, we just need you to make space for what already exists. Please spend these dollars on direct academic services to also support our students because that is what they are due. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vence, very thorough report. Appreciate your time. Members of the board, Cavi, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vence, for your report. I just wanted to kind of elaborate on what I was talking about with my last comment. I think the oversight committee is going to be really essential now. We're transforming this working group from kind of, you know, doing a lot of mental, emotional labor to, to arrive at these recommendations, to arrive at these proposals, to now making sure those recommendations have been implemented to the capacity at which they were intended to be implemented. And so I think this is going to make sure that we're not just, you know, tokenizing our black families, tokenizing our black students, our black community members, but really incorporating their voices as the foundation for the work that we do. And I'm really excited to see the district call in professionals, call in experts who, you know, have studied this, have made this their life's work, to make sure again, that we're not putting the labor on to those who have already been traumatized by the system. And I also think that the direction that we're going in is making sure that everyone on, on school campuses feels like a moral obligation to say something and to do something. I think what you talked about, Mr. Vence, earlier about how we've become desensitized to a sense is absolutely accurate. And, you know, I hate to bring this into it, but also with social media and everything, it's just, it's so commonplace to just see hatred and to see unfortunately anti-blackness and to, to see that as something that is standard, when in reality, it's, you know, there's zero tolerance for it. And so if we create a culture of recognizing, reporting, reacting, I think that's going to really, I think what we're looking at is a culture shift and that's going to address the root cause. So I'm excited to see what the district does with this. I'm excited to see what we, how we can all help and support and play a role in this. And I'm glad that we're taking the labor off of those who have been the most harmed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members' comments? Mr. Banning?
I just want to acknowledge and say thank you for the public comments, the people that have been here and, and been online, for the people that have participated with this, with the Anti-Blackness Task Force, which has really been a driving force and, and has pushed us in the right direction with persistence and demanding nature and effective work. And we're at this point now of implementation of the recommendations and I'm hearing the need for written and universal protocols. This is the same thing whenever we're trying to do almost any initiative to do things better for children in the school district. Coherence and consistency are critical components and there will be challenges, just like there are with any other initiative. This is complex work and there's impact of our broader culture that's added into everything that we're talking about tonight. We have to translate the persistence and the passionate work of the Anti-Blackness Task Force to effective oversight now. We have to have patience with our own fallibility and know that there may be bumps in the road and places where there's losing steam and gaining steam. But the, the truth is, what's different about this initiative with any other that might have a bump in the road or be gaining steam? You think about what we do in curriculum. We talked for years, the reading wars, about whether it was the science of reading or this or that, new math, old math, core standards, this and that. And if they slowed down a little bit, what does it mean? It means that the growth of students slowed down a little bit. Losing steam in this case is absolutely not okay. It can't be. Because unlike any of those things I just mentioned, we know what's right. We know what we need to do. We may not know if phonics works better than something else right now, and I think we do know that, I'm just using that as an example. But we know that the work we're doing for anti-blackness is absolutely right, essential. There's nothing else we can do. Thanks.
Anyone else? Ms. Munoz, please.
Yes, I'd also like to express my appreciation for the input, for all the work over so many months of the working group. And I want to ensure that from our, you know, from the district's perspective, is that there's uniform protocols and policies so that it doesn't matter what school something happens at, that the parents, that the students can expect, you know, have expectations of how it's going to be handled and that it's handled promptly. I need to emphasize that I want the students to have a safe environment and know that we're supportive throughout, as, as was mentioned by our speakers and by, by the public comments and by those of us here, and is that this has to be ongoing, as you said. And I am concerned about like the professional learning and the support that staff, you know, because this is a new, even unfortunately, racism has happened for years in our schools so that staff can have a place, a safe place to process how they handled something. The administrators, the staff, and the parents so that it's inclusive and transparent. And as, as was said, you know, there are times that it's, there's going to be some, you know, concerns and stuff, but just to be able to communicate that and the role of the oversight committee in this and including the community and being able to, to do this as best we, we can do this. You know, it's just that we have to kind of leave stuff at the door and go, okay, you know, we need to learn how to do this and, and such. So I appreciate, you know, the timeline, I appreciate that we're going to keep addressing this throughout the school year. And yeah, and, and, you know, so much appreciation for those in the community, for the parents that are here, you know, that have, for Serge that's waited to speak and for NAACP and for all the input that, that we can, we can all benefit from for the benefit of our students. Thank you.
Mr. Scobeto, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vence, for all of your work and for the cabinet and anyone who's contributed, Ms. Philhofer. I have a couple of questions. So I asked this question before the meeting and then we heard it during public comment. We do have definitions for things. We do have definitions for things like restorative approaches and trauma informed practices, correct?
Yes, we do.
And can we in the future, in materials where it's referenced, at some point define those terms? I, they are terms that have multiple interpretations.
And I I think you're bringing up a very, a very good point in terms of just making things very clear in terms of regarding these definitions and how we approach it within our schools, including the work that Ms. Edison will be doing with her team and providing professional learning with that. So, we can do that specifically for the next. We'll bring that up the next board item.
Thank you. And then the process for developing the oversight committee, I had asked about this. And then, can you speak to that process? What you plan on the process looking like and then talk about the specific? And I think you addressed it a little bit in your presentation, but the specific duties and roles that this oversight committee would have.
Yes, so the oversight committee, one of the things that we were thinking about doing in particular is actually having an application process. Not something that's clunky, but something in a way that provides that first step for someone who's really interested in doing this work. So, having an application process, number one. Number two, then having a group of people, very similar when we did this request for proposal, that selection committee, just having a group of community members, our educational partners, however you want to describe it, review the applications, then make the selection regarding that. So, that way, it's not just district staff choosing who will be part of the oversight committee. So, it's really having a more transparent process of of who will be on the oversight committee. Because this is something we would want people to be dedicated to doing, not just one time or two times. We would like to have them sign up for it throughout the year. The other thing is that it's a very important work. So, we, making these objectives very clear. I had mentioned the objectives earlier regarding this. And just really, the bottom line is that they are reviewing our timeline, making sure that we're on task. We report to them, get their feedback on the various, whether it's the reporting or recognizing or, you know, how our teachers are addressing what's happening in the schools. Having them part of the decision of the metrics, are we really measuring what we need to measure? And on top of it, reviewing the policies and the procedures with us to make sure that that's in place as well. So, these are just the, some of the objectives that we would incorporate into that group.
Thank you. And so, what I heard is not necessarily asking the oversight committee to write the procedures and policies, but to review them. And I think you had mentioned early, try to kick the tires on on these new policies and procedures, if you will.
Exactly. And it's another way to look at it is it's, in some ways, you can look at it as Demlac in particular. Because what they're doing is, uh, Demlac provides feedback. We we don't go to Demlac and ask, so, what do you think about educating our E M Ls, right? It doesn't work that way. We go into them like we say, here's what we see, this is in terms of the data, very M T S S, right? So, here's what we see with data. Here's what we're recommending doing. What else? First off, does this make sense to you? Second off, what are we missing? And then on top of that, they provide recommendation, they they provide the recommendations. And ultimately, we have to make the decisions along with the leadership, you know, the board to move things forward. But it's that process that makes sure that we're on track and that we're not caught with any blind spots with this process.
Thank you. And then as it relates to the staff training modules, I took the training modules that we had this past school year. And I agree that none of us walked away thinking that we can address any situation where we see a student express anti-blackness or racism. I saw those as primers that would get us some common language, talking about microaggressions and whatnot. These modules cannot just be primers and get us on the same language. And from what I'm hearing, and I asked about this before the meeting, from what I'm hearing, they're not just going to be online modules, that there will be in-person training. And I know in the past, we have even talked about kind of resource groups on each school campus to talk through situations when responding. Is that a part of your vision or the district's vision for these training modules?
It it has to be with a couple of things. Number one is that what we're envisioning was the development of these procedures. And as we're rolling out this type of professional learning, that's not a, I mean, it's a module in terms of a structure, but it's not a module in terms of just the training itself, because what's happened is we've used online as the term of module. So, people envisioned some online thing. What we've envisioned in particular with this is actually creating scenarios. So, teachers can actually, okay, so here are the procedures that you would take in terms of addressing this particular situation. Or like, here's the procedures, you're this teacher. Here's a scenario. How would you work through this? Talk about it with your elbow partner, like having these real conversations of actually doing the work and applying it. So, teachers could start practicing and staff can start practicing. Administrators can start practicing this work. The other thing is unifying this because we're taking this from from the district level, connecting it to administrators and connecting it to teachers. For example, we have our professional learning for district leadership at the last, it's the last week of July. We're incorporating this training. We're coming to our our leadership and saying, here are the expectations, number one. Here are the new policies. Here are the new procedures. And we will start doing professional learning with them and then we will continue to move on with with our educators. We'll continue to move on with other staff as well. So, these are the things that we're envisioning.
Thank you. And as it, as we look forward to this implementation process, there are going to be many people with many responsibilities. But who who's going to be coordinating this effort, right? And again, I asked you this question before, but who's going to be coordinating the effort? We don't want this all happening in silos. We've heard a lot about coherence and the fact that this needs to be the same across the school district. What does that look like?
So, there are various leaders who will be taking on roles. So, for example, I I discuss Ms. Edison. Ms. Edison will be involved with this in terms of working with students, working with the policies and implementing those policies. Same with Ms. Pilhoffer. She'll be involved with this. We have our principals who will be involved. But ultimately, there has to be the point person with this and that point person will be me. Because there has to be someone who's going to unify student and family services. We we just heard tonight, what about F E U, the leader at F E U to do, to be the point person there? We have educational services. How do we take our policies and procedures and start thinking about it and incorporating it into our curriculum? Making choices with the books we read. If we were talking about educating students, the education process starts with that as well. So, there are these things that will be occurring, but ultimately, there's one, it has to be one person as that point person and that will be me.
Thank you. So, again, I want to thank you for all of those answers and for all of your work in this. And for also taking on the work to carry this forward. And for all of our cabinet members, for all of our staff, for everyone involved. I am very proud of this district for taking this on, but that doesn't mean that it stops here. Now, we need action. And I hear the folks that, and I feel it myself, where we have talked a lot about getting to this point. And I share the concern as well that it seems like for, we're at the end of June and we have July to to develop a lot of these procedures and protocols and policies. And I we need to get to work. And I am hoping that we're reaching out to professionals that have done this in education, that have thought about this, that we have higher education partners. We have folks at healing spaces that I hope that we're tapping into. That we cannot just do this in a silo. And I also hope that we're not just asking black folks to to develop these procedures and and policies, which is why I'm I'm happy to hear that you are taking on this role to be the point person as well. Because we all have our share in addressing this. I again want to thank the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group. I really do see the actionable items there. I'm hoping that the next time that we see the timeline, that it is, it provides a little bit more information. I want to see really concrete items. And we do have some on here. When we're talking about updating district policies and procedures. I'm hoping that the next time, maybe it's too quick of a turnaround, but even if we have part of our policies and procedures, giving us an idea of where we're at, right? I think the key metrics that we're going to be looking at is going to be important for me. I don't just want to see how many staff have taken the module. I want to see something that also talks about the student experience. And that tells us, is this working? And we're not going to know in the first month, in the first year, and we're, but we need that information so that when we get it out, we can start being agile on where we're going. Uh, it's been said a couple of times, we're not going to be able to anticipate every single situation. We are not going to design this perfect from the beginning. And I'm going to encourage us to not to feel like we have to design it perfectly to start getting to the work. We're going to figure out things that we work really well and we're also going to figure out things that don't work well. And we're going to have to pivot. And I want us to have some information in the data, talking about being an M T S S district. Let's get that data. Sometimes that data is not always quantitative. Sometimes it's qualitative data as well. I I think I want to hear a little bit of that as as we move through this process. At the on this timeline, we have the implementation that goes from July twenty-three to June twenty-four. That's, in my opinion, and I get it, we're at the very beginning, so we're going to be developing this over the next month. I want more, I want shorter periods of time, talking about what we're going to be working on in between board updates. I want very specific items. If we're working on developing Module One, let's talk about that. What do you intend on being in Module One and what does that look like and what are we doing to get that done? I want, you've given us some examples of what will be in future reports. This is good. But I also want to hear about what is working really well and what we think we're going to have to fix. What is not working so well. I want to hear what you thought you were going to get done in that period of time and what you weren't able to get done in that time, because that's part of transparency, is talking to folks about, uh, you know, we thought we had the capacity to do it, we just didn't. Or this thing came up and we weren't able to get to that unfortunately, but we have rolled it into the next period of implementation. This is what it looks like. You all have my full support and I have every trust that I'm so impressed by the fact that you wholeheartedly embrace this work effort. Don't be afraid to talk about those areas where sometimes we fall short, because we are going to fall short. I think as we move forward through this process, I I brought it up earlier as many times as possible, that we use specific definitions so that we're all speaking the same language. It's happened to me in the past. And that I liked the definition of restorative approaches that you had shared or that Dr. Maldonado had shared. I I hope that we can add a little bit more there that focuses more on the repair of harm or the person that's harmed. So that we call that out specifically and make it, if you go deeper into, you I think associated with that was the five Rs. There is an accountability aspect to this. It's not that people are just forgiven in a restorative approach. I think one part that I am particularly going to pay attention to is the consistency across all of our schools. A parent with a school at an elementary, at junior high and at high school should understand the procedures and the policies, because it should be the same at every school. Now, it's important for me to say this, is that the outcomes and what the consequences will not always look the same. Because what it means to repair harm for one student is different than what it's going to mean for another student. And so that it's important for us to say that so that when we have circumstances that go through these procedures and protocols, albeit the procedure is the same, the policies are the same, sometimes the outcomes are not the same. And I think give me one sec, because I looked through my notes. I think another thing that I I want to say is and it's in here, but and I think a public commenter had said it, is having those affinity groups, but also having as much, as many positive spaces for black folks. And we went to, President Simson and I went to the B S U barbecue, where we had all of the B S U's at the high schools, creating those spaces at the junior highs, at the elementaries. And for us and other groups, other adults to embrace those spaces, share those spaces with folks and seeking it out. But I think that's one area where we could do better. I'm looking forward to leadership teams of our labor partners. I was really glad to hear a teacher give public comment tonight and made some really, really good points that I, that we should take to heart. But also, the leadership teams of our labor partners need to join us in this implementation effort. I'm really looking forward to our school leadership, taking part in this implementation effort and making it a priority. It's something that I'm going to be paying attention to. And there may have to be accountability there as well if we have folks, especially in leadership, that are not taking this as seriously as, or making it as much of a priority as it should be. And again, I just want to express gratitude to everyone who's been showing up, giving public comment. I know that this is an exhausting effort to show up time and time again and always feel like we're waiting for action to happen. I'm hoping that over these next few board meetings and these next few months, that we're actually going to see the fruits of our labor. And it's not always going to be perfect, but we will get it right. And I just want to again, thank you, Mr. Vance. Thank you to everyone who has come. Thank you to our district staff, the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group, all the folks, the families, the students who continue to show up. And yeah, that's my public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Scobeta. Well said. Mr. Vance, you and I had a conversation the other day, which was very good about this specifically. And you educated me in some of the systems that we have in place and that we need to refine so that we can do better. One of the things that I appreciated about, I still appreciate about our our conversation is that we sometimes need to be reminded of the roles that each of one plays. The board's job is to give the what. And it's your job and your team to figure out the how. So, I really appreciate you showing us the how. So I really appreciate you showing us the how. A couple of things that I would like to see in the future is that you tie this, that you put a budget to this. How can we support you to implement this plan? And somebody mentioned about the possibility of requests for proposals. When you get ready to do that, please keep us informed. And when you come to recommend a selection, please include those vendors who answered the request for proposal, so that we have the information of the thoroughness that you've done for this. In addition to that, I, I believe that this endeavor, which is what we should be doing and we are doing, I remember March 2022, that we started this journey, and I'm so happy to be part of that journey today. I think it's actually more difficult than academics, because what we are doing, what we have taken on is that we are changing the culture. To change a culture, you have to change behaviors. To change behaviors, you have to change a mindset. And that's very, very difficult, because we, as a district, we, that's who we are, and that's what we are going to do. In addition to that, that's going to impact not only staff, but students and families. And we all have different opinions. So I'm very proud that we are taking this step, and I know it's not going to be easy, but I know it's possible. And I do have one question, and maybe you already answered this, as far as the writing the protocols, who will own that? Will that be a team effort? And is that mainly with site leaders and teachers, or who's going to write those protocols?
We're starting off with the team at the school district office to start the process of writing the protocols. We don't have the, there are two parts to this. We don't want to spend a lot of time going out to groups and basically, we're starting from ground zero, so we've got to move faster. What we want to do is create the protocols in terms of, of what we're, what we've received from the inside group, which was looking at other school districts and what protocols that they're using, successful school districts. So we can start to incorporate that, so we're not reinventing the wheel. But the other part is, then we take it to our groups, to teacher groups, to the Oversight Committee and so on, and start getting their feedback and start like, what's, does this work, or what does this not work? So then they have something to, to take a bite of and then determine like, how to improve it. What we've learned is that if we start that process, we'll be able to move faster and at the same time, get their input, incorporate their recommended changes, so that we all have ownership ultimately of the final product, right?
Thank you. This culture of dignity and respect, it might take a little longer than we all want. And we don't want to rush it, because we want to make sure that people involved feel valued, and that we are giving it the attention, the time that it deserves. So I thank you, and please keep that in mind. And I had one more, one more question. In regards to the application process that you mentioned for the Oversight Committee, please make sure that that's also available to staff, not staff members, community members who may not be fluent in English, that may need some support in filling out those applications. Please, I'd like to be as inclusive as possible. And the other one, when you and I had a conversation the other day, you helped me understand the role of our family engagement liaisons. Can you review that for the public, please?
So our family engagement liaisons, their, their role is to connect with families to, in various ways, to support them, whether it's social, emotional needs that they, to help their students, sorry, let me back up, running at the end of the night here.
I know, it's 10 o'clock.
So they're, they're a very important resource, because we have our teachers, we have our administrators, we have, including our, I mentioned before, paras or literacy or curriculum specialist and so on. We have our staff at schools that see issues that may be arising with a child, or sees a need, and we need to connect with the family to better bring them in, to be part of the solution. That's where the family engagement liaison can come into play. One of the things that I had mentioned the other day was that we have family liaisons at schools, as well as we have a family engagement unit that's, that incorporates liaisons, but we do have, we do have positions where we'll have a family liaison here at the district focusing on special education, and we have a lead position, a family engagement unit lead position. The lead position is that role is supposed to be the point person to address any of the needs, families, let's say we have a family that doesn't know what to do, doesn't know a school, where, where does my child go to school, or, I just moved into the, the community, and I just needed extra support. So they go to Student and Family Services, and Student and Family Services may provide them with like, well, here's how you go and connect with the school, but then they learn that there are more, there's more needs to it than just that. That lead person can connect them to various resources, whether it's at the liaison at the school, which will be important, also connecting it with partners within our community, like the people who can actually support us, whether it's, like I said, so social, emotional needs, health needs, basic health needs, and so on. One of the things that we can keep hearing over and over again is we need to have a point person to address these issues. And with that being said, there is a position for something like this, and rethinking that position in terms of, this person could be that point person, are they the ones coming with the solutions? They're not going to be the, the, as we would say, the, the sage that would have the solutions, but they know which, where the resources are, where they can send a family to get the support that's needed. And that's one of the things that we're looking at in terms of the family engagement unit, and rethinking this point person that keeps coming up, as we're hearing.
Thank you. And of course, from what I hear you say, this point person is going to be part of this process that you just presented. Thank you, Mr. Vance. It's after 10 o'clock. We going to be moving forward with this for coming events. Let's see what we have here. I think we have a couple of things, mostly summer school. Yes, it, coming events, a reminder that summer school is June 20th to July 14. And future agenda items, we have three there. The next board meeting agenda, I believe, is July 18. Yes, the next board meeting is July 18. Any final comments from board members before we adjourn public session? We will be adjourning public session at 10:06 PM, and the board will be returning to closed session. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.